I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. If I could have Skylar, Ms. Sonoma County, please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, can we have roll call?
Councilmember Edwards?
Here.
Councilmember Gallion?
Present.
Councilmember Hundley?
Here.
Councilmember Aggermonte?
Mayor Cook?
Here.
Mayor Cook, members of the city council, before you begin your meeting tonight, I would like to ask that Item 7B, which is the discussion, consideration, and possible action to approve a proposed amendment to the City Watershed's Proposition 1E grant for drainage improvements along First Street West between West Spain Street and Depot Park, I'm asking that that item be tabled to a future meeting date. We have been advised, staff has been advised today by the Sonoma County Water Agency that they've just received results of new modeling tests of the proposed project that need further study, and they have asked that the item be tabled until they have updated their grant proposal and presentation. Staff does support this request by the Water Agency to table this item, and so at this time, we are requesting that Item 7B be tabled until a future meeting. Staff is supporting this because we believe that this project needs to come forward with the most up-to-date information and correct modeling, project information, so we would prefer that the Water Agency be present and make the presentation based on their new data.
Thank you, Carol. Is there any council questions on pulling this item?
Since we have so many people here tonight to speak on it, would it be possible or advisable to let them speak during the public comment?
I would rather not, during public comment, they can speak about what, not to have it pulled, but as far as the discussion, it would be better to do that at a later date.
And Carol, when would you see this coming back to council?
They did not give us a date at this time. I might confer with my Public Works Director. Yes, just for the record, they didn't give us a date, but we are hoping that it will be on the next council meeting, but we will give as much notice as we can as soon as we hear back from the Water Agency.
Thank you. Is there any other questions for staff before I bring it out to public? If not, I will go ahead and open this for public comment, and I would ask that you only talk about the pulling of this item and not the item itself.
Councilmembers, I'm Jim Bohr. I live at 299 West First, right down here across from the Creek area, which is the subject of this study. I'll try to be succinct because I wasn't prepared for this, but I would, I defer to the mayor on how you want to handle this, but I'd like to go in record as saying, this delay, I can anticipate that the deadline for this money, and I'm afraid there are a lot of people that consider this $1.9 million as money looking for a project rather than the way around. If it's going to put more pressure on the people making the decision and put more pressure on the public to agree with this by getting closer to the deadline and have this grant run out, I'd really have a big issue with that. Do you think that could have some impact on this? Because the deadline has been touted. Why it's being done at this late date, I don't know, but the deadline is looming, and that concerns me.
Thank you. I'll direct that question to staff.
One other item. There seems to be conversation and more information going around the city for a lot of, a lot of the residents, including everyone on this street, that the approach that the engineers have taken is perhaps not as enlightened as the last 30 years of all the communities in Northern California. There's probably dozens and dozens of Creek restoration projects which are going on using new technology and a new approach, and there are dozens of these streams, and they use what appears to be more modern natural water management programs. And if you look at this, this is one of the definitive treatises on this by a woman named Ann Riley that I got from the Ecology Center. This describes all of the natural water handling procedures that have developed over the last 30, 40 years, all the streams that have been restored as part of these programs. There isn't one for Sonoma. There's a dozen in Berkeley, there's 10 in Walnut Creek, Marin County, West Marin, Lagunitas Creek, there's dozens of these things, and none of them appear on this list for Sonoma. I'd like, I would really appreciate it, and I think a lot of other citizens would be, if perhaps the council would be willing to review this document and decide whether there's a more enlightened approach to this. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And I'll continue on with public comment before we ask staff to answer questions. Yes. And right now, we're just talking about the tabling of 7B. We're a little off agenda right now because we're actually pulling an item.
Okay, so can I talk after?
Oh, yes, yeah.
Okay, well, I want to talk on public comment.
Thank you.
Approximately seven years ago, when the city had free money through the county...
Your name and address, please.
Oh, excuse me, I beg your pardon. Bill Spencer, 319 First West, next door to the Cooperage that way, next door to the Silvestri Apartments this way, right in the middle of the field there, Dunlap. Approximately seven years ago, when the city had all the money to do a curb gutter and sidewalk on that side of the street, and they had, through the county, some through the state, the city argument was, well, it's free, somebody's going to build apartments, medical building, sooner or later, they're going to need it, they can do it right now. All I'm trying to do is compare that one with this one, and he said, this way, it will be done, that'll be it, everybody'll be glad, and we put workers together and all that to work.
Yeah, thank you. We're actually, this is, this is a unique situation, and I would rather just have public comment of asking or talking about, we're making the decision to pull the item for a future date.
Well, if I could just have about 10 or 12 more seconds, the last, all the neighbors didn't want it, the last person that got up said he was Tom Dunlap. I don't intend to do anything with that property. If I do, I hope I get a smart enough architect to put a little driveway over it, and that's probably what's going to happen again. The people here that live here are the ones that should be able to have their neighborhood the way they want it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Is there any other public comment about tabling this item? If not, does city staff want to answer that question from public?
Thank you. Dan Takasugi, Public Works Director. The Water Agency actually had a deadline that had passed, however, they asked the Department of Water Resources for an extension, and they had not heard back, and so we were kind of working in this timeline where we aren't sure if we have the extension or not. However, the Water Agency will go back to Department of Water Resources this week, asking for another short extension, hoping that we can further analyze the modeling data and then come back to council before that point.
Yeah, thank you, Dan. I will, I will bring this back to the council for, I, yeah, we, well, we've already, we've already closed public comment, I apologize, but I'll bring this back to council for discussion and action.
The only thing, I guess the only thing I have to offer, and being lucky enough to, you know, for all of us to read through the material, there was initially a project before this, and that was Montini, I think, so that was part of this, and that's, that's part of that delay, it was decided. I don't want to speak for you, but that, you know, there was a delay, and that's why, you know, we're still working on something else. So I just, it's not as if, you know, we've been working on this for three years, there have been other, another project ahead of this. So I just thought I'd mention that, and if, you know, if our Public Works Director wanted to add to that, it's, you know, whatever, but, you know, thank you.
Councilmember Hundley?
I had a meeting with Dan, I think last week, and I was, Mr. Takasugi, and I was really excited to hear what they were going to present tonight, but I would prefer that it come back with the most complete information, although I really appreciate everyone that showed up tonight to talk about it, and I hope that the next time it's on the agenda, that they can still have enough, the same momentum that they had tonight, that this won't cause any sort of delay in that, and that maybe next time you can find more people to come with you, so this, you won't feel like this hurt your cause, but I think that delaying it until we have the most information would be the preferred thing to do.
Council, Vice Mayor Gallion?
I myself, having seen the process with Montini coming to this particular decision here, have seen the value of actually waiting till you have all of the information on the table before making a decision. So I am in favor of definitely making a motion to withdraw this until time certain, well, not time certain, just withdraw this motion for tonight until it's appropriate that we have the information to make the decision.
Councilmember Edwards?
And I would back that up, but reading through the material from the people that presented before, I'm very open to meeting with any of, anybody in the neighborhood to have a discussion about this. I have my thoughts about it, which I won't share now, but I think we need to be considerate of that, but pushing it back, I think, Councilmember Hundley and I had a meeting with Public Works just a few days ago, and this is pretty new to us, and I think I prefer the delay, that'll give us a better sense of what the community really wants in that spot.
Thank you. So I'm looking for a second?
That's my second.
We have a motion on the floor and a second. Is there any more discussion before we do a roll call vote? City Clerk, can we do a roll call vote?
Councilmember Edwards?
Aye.
Councilmember Gallion?
Aye.
Councilmember Hundley?
Aye.
Councilmember Aggermonte?
Aye.
Mayor Cook?
Aye. Now, we'll go back to our regular agenda. Comments from the public. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. It is recommended that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. Under state law, matters presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the city council at this time.
Good evening, Mayor, members of Sonoma City Council. My name is Tony Geraldi, I'm the General Operations Manager of Sonoma County Airport Express. Airport Express happens to be the primary sponsor of the Miss Sonoma County Scholarship Program, which is an incredible program for young ladies here in Sonoma County. I would personally like to invite members of the city council, mayor, to attend our 69th Annual Miss Sonoma County Pageant on March 7th, Saturday, March 7th, at 7:00 PM at the Spreckles Performing Arts Center in Roanoke Park. Last year, we had a number of members of local elected officials. Don't believe we had anyone from Sonoma, so we'd love to see somebody from, elected official from Sonoma there this year. So it's, the program, it's an awesome program, a little fact, some factoids about it. Again, this is our 69th year. We have the longest-running program in, under the Miss California organization. We've had over 750 young women that have gone through the program. They've mastered their public speaking skills, they've, the self-confidence they receive, the, the maturity, honoring their talent. It's a, just a tremendous program for young ladies here in Sonoma County. We've, we've had Miss Sonoma County have become doctors, scientists, teachers. 1965, our Miss Sonoma County became an Emmy Award-winning actress, Karen Valentine, don't know if you remember her or not. So, yeah, that's kind of our claim to fame for, well, one of our claims, claim to fame with the program. The, this pageant, it's been many years since we've had Miss California come to our pageant, and this year, we have her. She'll be making an appearance as well and helping on stage, and it's, yeah, it'd be great to have, have you there. As an elected official, you'll be introduced from the, from the stage and get a chance to wave, and love to have you come out.
We'll make sure somebody from Sonoma is there.
Great, well, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there any other comments from the public?
Good evening. My name is James Bennett, and I don't live in Sonoma itself. I came here to speak on the fluoridation issue.
That'll be coming up at a later...
That's what I understand.
Yeah, right now, we're just speaking on things that are not on the agenda at this time.
Well, this is much broader and bigger picture, what I was going to speak to you about now. First of all, I'd like to commend the tone that you've set in your council meeting here as being one that's kind of interactive. It's kind of the exception rather than the rule in Sonoma County right now in terms of the way that council meetings are held. And, you know, I was thinking the other day, there's a good barometer to use in any relationship to know whether you've gone astray and whether you're doing the right thing or not, and I think the, the context that we're in here is representative government, and I hope that you all regard it as a relationship. Whenever there are secrets involved, I think almost by definition, that means that maybe you might not be doing the right thing by the other member, or members in this case in the relationship. And I know that you're under a lot of pressure from these groups that technically really are not part of our government, namely ICLI, MTC, and ABAG, that puts you under a lot of pressure to adopt these ideas, that these programs, lots of programs, that are highly impactful to your community and your constituents. These climate action plans, if somebody reads through them, the public would be wanting to know why they don't all know about the details and the dark baggage of these plans. Plan Bay Area, your adherence to this tyrannical plan is voluntary, and if I was a council person, I would feel a burden to make sure that my constituents knew about Plan Bay Area and about these climate action plans because they are highly impactful and they are in the antithesis of the rural country way of life that most of your constituents honor and the reason that they pay the big money to live here. I would just ask you to think about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Win Gersich, 30166 Industrial Parkway, Southwest Hayward. I drove two hours to come up here today because my sister lives in Roanoke Park, and she read your newspaper, and she told me, get out there. And what I wanted to talk about, I'm going to talk later, too, but I actually went to the, it was the Climate Change March that they had in Oakland, and this was two Saturdays ago, and at the end of the parade, they were talking about Jerry Brown ban fracking now, and they said, we need to text him at 69866. And the reason is, is that Kern County, is this is where we grow our food, just like you grow food up here, they're putting fracking wastewater into the ocrefers. Eleven ocrefers are contaminated, the ocrefers have sunk 12 feet, and here, we're drinking toilet-to-tap water in the Bay Area while they're using our good drinking water for fracking, and they're poisoning it. And once they do this, they bring up methane gas, they put 596 chemicals blasted 60 miles an hour with sand into the ground, and if they're contaminating our ocrefers, that is their dumping ground. That land is poison, they can never live there. Those people are going to have to leave the area that they live in, and they'll move up to the places where they're stacking and packing them in the Bay Area. So the thing that's bad about this is that the CalPERS pension plans, and I get one, is that they invest in this. They invest in the dirty oil fracking, and yet the city councils are going, go green, you know, clean energy, solar, and yet they're, they're investing in dirty fossil fuel. So not this Monday, but last Monday, I go to the Palo Alto City Councils, I go to city councils all over the Bay Area, and at Palo Alto, what they did was really something. They actually passed a resolution that the city workers, the CalPERS pension people, had to divest their money and not invest in dirty oil fracking. And I hope that they set precedence that the rest of it is, because if you vest in corporations which are people, then our city workers, the firemen and the policemen and all the people that work for the cities and the schoolteachers under CalPERS are investing and poisoning the drinking water, of which, you know, waters the crops that we eat, whether you live there or not, you know, we all share the same backyard, right? And if they're going to totally destroy California, that I don't think any of our city workers, and I certainly don't want my pension plan invested in, you know, dirty fracking stuff, because this was one thing, too. A couple of years ago, Jerry Brown went to UCLA, and he was on the radio, and he was talking about he wanted to go down and learn about fracking. And I called in the radio show, and I said, I want to know where the fracking wastewater reservoir is, where do you put the waste? And they said, oh, it's too complicated. I said, no, it's not. I said, give me one name, where is it? Kettleman City? I'm just asking for one name. What city are you putting this wastewater in? They hung up on me. Well, I know why they hung up on me, because they're using our drinking water ocrefers to put the wastewater in. Is that how we want to live in this state? And I hope to God that the city council follows Palo Alto, where Stanford is, and, you know, they're part of the depopulation plan there, you know, Paul Ehrlich and depopulation, and the fact is, if you're going to go green, go all the way. The city workers should not be investing their pension plans in dirty oil fracking if you're talking going green.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Skylar Palacios, and I've been through to a couple appearances in Sonoma, but most of them were before the new city council came over, so I was happy to meet the three of you today. So I was born, I'm just going to tell you a little bit about myself and the program. I was born in Sonoma County, born and raised, I currently reside in Healdsburg. I work at Fierce Cheer, it's an elite cheerleading gym in Santa Rosa, as a tumbling coach, and I also work at Shed, so I have two jobs, but what I consider my true job is to be Miss Sonoma County, because it requires a lot more time and effort than my other two jobs do. So part of my job is to make several appearances throughout my year, and today marks my 99th appearance, so I'm pretty proud of that. By the end of my title in three weeks, I will have done well over 100 appearances, so I think that's the record, right? Yeah.
That's one every three days, that's pretty good.
So part of my job is to basically be a representative of the community. I get to go to parades and wave. In Sonoma, I was at both the Vintage Parade and the Fourth of July Parade, and I have to say, the Fourth of July Parade was definitely by far my favorite parade. I've been to 13 so far this year, so definitely something to be proud of in your community. It was very fun, and the people were so friendly. I think I took over like 50 pictures with random people. It was a lot of fun. I also get to go to the Sonoma County Fair almost every day, kind of like every other day, and ride the rides, eat the food, which is interesting, bacon-covered cinnamon rolls and whatnot, but I also got to sing the National Anthem a few times and, and judge some talent shows, so it was a lot of fun. One of my bigger parts of my job is to attend city council meetings like this and talk about the program. I've also been to several Chamber of Commerce gatherings, so just kind of getting our voice out there for the community. And one of the biggest parts of my job, which is volunteerism service, community service, is part of the Miss America Crown, so they take it into deep consideration with all their title holders. So far this year, I've raised money for Children's Miracle Network, KRCB Television, which is Sonoma County's local television station, Salvation Army, and Raven Theater in Healdsburg with Dancing with the Stars. What I consider to be the biggest part of my job, however, is being a role model for young women. I get a lot of girls that come up to me and ask me, are you a real princess? And I kind of smile at them, and I say, yes, but the difference is that I earned my crown through being a great student and through community service, so I encourage them to do the same. It's been the best year of my life so far, and once again, I'm giving up my title March 7th, so I'd love it if you could all make it there. I've used my scholarship money that I've earned from this program as a student at Sonoma State University, where I'm earning my credential in teaching. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll continue public comment?
Jack Wagner, Fano Lane, thank you, David, for helping me out here. I have some actually prepped stuff here. From the city council goals for 2014, 2015, infrastructure to review options to increase public transit within Sonoma, this is one of the big issues I ran on last year, the three of you that were at the, what, Seven Flags and the Sonoma Valley Democrats Forum. Remember that this was a very positive reaction to this, this idea. So I think the best option right now is to earmark some of the money that may be coming if the county sales tax passes in June. The Board of Supervisors already earmarked 10% of what they will be receiving to expand public transit in Sonoma County. For us to make it viable, we're going to have to take a beer chunk. I don't know if that's exactly what we'll be coming up with, but based on us, our population, if it's distributed that way, we should get about a third of a million a year for the five years. And it costs about $150,000 a year just to do a very basic pilot project, but then there's additional ways of getting money. Just tickets themselves usually get about 10 to 70% of the cost of public transit. Muni probably somewhere 60, 70, we'd probably get maybe closer to 20. Subsidies usually come in to supplement the deficit of that, and then, of course, there's sponsorship through TID, there's business advertising, we can use this to gain public awareness and just further advertise the culture in Sonoma. Public transit improves our quality of life in many ways. People who ride public transit are usually a little less stressed and, and, yeah, it improves many things, it's a cleaner economy, and it also meets a number of our council goals, and this is also an example of how we really do balance our character here. With Sonoma, the small-town character in our tourism is through taxing tourism. The TOT and sales tax from visitors and tourists account for about half of our budget. Putting that towards ways of enhancing our city and our way of life and our character is how we balance that. The Visitors Bureau already does this for the NASCAR, so there's not, this is an alien to us, we used to have a shuttle that went down to San Francisco years and years ago, and hopefully with this kind of foundation of funds, this will give us some, the ability to expand it and get other funds, and hopefully even at the sunset of that tax, to, to make it sustainable. Sonoma deserves a first-rate public transit system. We can afford it, it fulfills our council goals, and enhances our quality of life. So I'm asking that you bring this up for discussion at some point before the tax election comes, and maybe I'll get more minutes to, to talk about this, and so people will get some time to look into it themselves, but thank you, and thanks, David.
Thank you. You were exactly three minutes, that's impressive.
Good evening. Peter Alexander Cherenef, gardener, writer, poet, and troublemaker. I was inspired, I wrote you a poem, and I'm going to do a little introduction... I was inspired, I wrote you a poem and I'm going to do a little introduction. I'm actually going to read someone else's writing, just a little bit as an intro. "The desire, to desire freedom is an instinct. To secure it requires intelligence. It must be comprehended and self-asserted. To petition for it is to stultify oneself, for petitioner is a confessed subject and lacks the spirit of a freeman. To rail and rant against tyranny is to manifest inferiority, for there is no tyranny but ignorance. To be conscious of one's power is to lose consciousness of tyranny. Self-government is not a remote aim. It is an intimate and inescapable fact. To govern oneself is a natural imperative and all tyranny is the miscarriage of self-government. The first requisite of freedom is to accept responsibility for the lack of it." And for you this evening, it's a little complicated, so I'll do my best. I hope you will as well. Detective James Rothstein has stated a very clear piece, that every investigation of this group, the hierarchy will always cease. No matter how much information, not even a smoking gun, it seems this gang rules this nation, as perversion be their fun. Former presidential candidate, the courageous Cynthia McKinney, regarding this topic, made it quite myopic and she's certainly no one's corporate nanny. She, as Senator McKinney, challenged Donnie Rumsfeld in public hearing and so on the floor. Regarding his and Bush's support of exploitation and child trafficking, you see, just see Cynthia McKinney-Rumsfeld dinocore. Yes, indeed, such corruption and such greed, they act above the law. In this world known as hell with its cracked Liberty Bell and this world be a war zone, worst I ever saw. Cynthia proved it once more, as have Detective Rothstein, former FBI chief Ted Gunderson and former Senator John DeCamp, that organized pedophiles, running wild, demand of us more than just a lighted lamp. They snicker, they sneer, they be both straight and so too queer. A truly powerful organization readily murders to maintain fear. There be no doubt, they are the nastiest of fiends, utilizing heavy military mind control amongst their many means. And the facts speak incredulously repeated true, yes, every report. They own the media, organized religions, and absolutely the court. The organized religions owned and operated by the Catholic Church. And it be recommended, you Google your noodle to Sister Jane Kelly YouTube. Indeed, please do a net search. Yes, my friends, they get away with murdering rape young children for more than just fun. They absolutely are the force behind poisonous chemtrails, lethal vaccines, and forcing fluoride and more, because it's all under Agenda 21. And the politicians-
Thank you. I'll give you about 10 seconds left. We have a three minute-
I need about 15. And the politicians will simply, mostly, be concerning but will do as they are told by their hidden masters. Time be for the public to act with all true strength and love, being almightily bold. For we are being genocide, a dress rehearsal this is not. Be ye the children of Creator, then act as liberator. Have you any excuse? Perhaps you just forgot. The iron be hot, yes, so to the skittle. The 40-day strike conquers Sataniel's never-ending murderous riddle." Two more lines.
I'm going to have to ask you to-
For there's nowhere to run and nowhere to hide, your fate be now calling, far greater than fluoride. For I am the best, I am the worst, I am the blessed, I am the cursed. I be you, as you be me, and we are here to set Almighty's love free.
Thank you.
And I have a copy of this and a few more items for you and anybody here that wishes to have this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment at this time? Rosemary, we'll wait for you.
Thank you, Rosemary Pedrenzini, 437 Second Street West. I want to say, I went to City Hall this afternoon. I read the agenda on outside. I went in and I went to the lady at the desk and said, I have a complaint to make. So she said, what is it? And I said, I live on Second Street West, Napa Street, there's a big hole by the bank and I'm going to lose a tire in the pickup and it's ridiculous. So she was very gracious. I don't know her name, but she got a piece of paper and I'm standing there and where is it? And I said, it's by the fire hydrant by old Sonoma Valley Bank, okay? She knew it. I got in the car to come home. And here's Henry, I love Henry, he works for the city, and he's going to do something and I'm like, wait a minute, I want to talk to you. I'm in a hurry, Rosemary. So he came down the street and I'm putting out the garbage can tonight, I'm talking to the neighbor, and he goes, what do you want? I said, there's a hole that's been there for a week. He said, oh, we got more complaints than you, so we're going to take care of it tomorrow. So thank God for that. Now, in, oh, I know. Sunday night, I do a lot of the work, even though we have a gardener, mow, blow and go. Benny was watching TV. I went out to rake the dead-headed camellias that I did and I fell in my front lawn. Since I had the hip with the plate, sometimes I'm tired, I can't get up. And I'm there, he doesn't know I'm out there. People are walking by the tourist. And this young couple pulled up in a pickup and she said to her husband, this lady needs some help. Oh, God, did I. He got me up. Bless them, she raked the camellias, she put them in my compost, took them in the back of the driveway behind our pickup, and I wanted their name. And he goes, we're not giving you our name. So I said, please, I'm okay, I didn't break anything. I broke one hip already on Spain Street. He works for, not going to pronounce right, Maya Com is up there, Cave Dale in Trinity? Okay, I went to hell to get an address, a phone book. But my daughter Roxanne gave me their address and they are my angels. I sent them a donation and I send Shelby. You know, I give it. If I don't have it, you don't get it. But I just want to thank, they were my angels, and thank the city that they're going to fill the holes on Second Street and Napa Street, okay? I probably went over my time, as usual.
No, you have four seconds left. You did great, Rosemary.
Four seconds? Oh, God.
You just used them up, so. Is there any other comments from the public? If not, I'll go ahead and close comments from the public and open up meeting dedications. Councilmember Edwards.
So I have a meeting dedication today to my son Sullivan, who turned four today.
Good for him.
And we made the birthday cake last night. We had a little celebration at 4:00 PM so we could get here for a council. So Sullivan, I'm thinking about you. Thanks.
Is there any other meeting dedications? So city clerk, we'll make that note. Number three is presentations. We have none scheduled this time. Number four, consent calendar, agenda order. All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be acted upon by a single motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the council, staff, or public request specific items to be removed for separate action. At this time, council may decide to change the order of the agenda. Is there any council questions? I will go ahead and, does anybody have anything on the one pool? I'll go ahead and open public comment. And I will bring it back for council discussion and action.
If there are no questions, then I would make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
And I will second. City clerk, can we do a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Edwards?
Aye.
Councilmember Gallion?
Aye.
Councilmember Hundley?
Aye.
Councilmember Agarmati?
Aye.
Mayor Cook?
Aye. And with that, I wanted, we have a special guest, if you would come up, please, Ron. He's our new planning commissioner and congratulations. And I'll let you say a few words if you would like.
I'll keep it very short, but I've had the privilege of living in Sonoma since 1985 and recognizing that I'm looking forward to this opportunity to giving back to the city. So I look forward to my opportunity of sitting on the planning commission. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And at this time, I would also like to express, we had 15 individuals that went for planning commission and we're actually going to have an opening coming up again here. And we were only able to pick two of the 15 and I appreciate the community involvement and I want to thank all those individuals for, I know it's hard sometimes. I went for a commission and the mayor didn't give it to me at that point. I won't say who the mayor was. No, it's just you can't, you can't pick all 15, but welcome, Ron, and I look forward to your work on the planning commission. Number five, consent calendar, agenda order, city council as a successor agent. Do I have council questions or would anybody like to pull an item? I'll go out to public comment. If there's no public comment, I'll come back for council discussion and action. Vice Mayor Gallion?
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve the consent calendar, agenda order for city council as successor agency.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. City clerk, can we do a roll call vote on the consent calendar for the successor agency?
Councilmember Edwards?
Aye.
Councilmember Gallion?
Aye.
Councilmember Hundley?
Aye.
Councilmember Agarmati?
Aye.
Mayor Cook?
Aye. Public hearings, item 6A, discussion, consideration of possible action to update city fee schedule based on 2014, 2015 operating budget. City staff?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Cook, members of the city council. Tonight, you're conducting a public hearing to review the update to the city's fee schedule for 2015. The last update was conducted in November of 2013. Prior to that time, the city's fee schedule had not been updated since 2008. It was a council goal in 2013, 14, that the city's fee schedule be updated annually to align with the current costs as shown in the city's budget. The fee schedule is set to reimburse for those services that benefit only the specific users of that service and do not benefit the general public as a whole. With exception to fees established or limited by state law, such as the building department fees, all other fees are determined through a cost accounting analysis of the actual costs that the city incurs. This method of direct charge fees frees up general purpose tax funds to be used for services, maintenance, and facilities costs, which benefit the entire community. Overall, of the approximate 135 fee types listed in the fee schedule, 41 fees remain unchanged and 44 fees have actually been reduced. This is a direct reflection of tighter budgeting controls, efficiencies by city employees, new software technology, and a reevaluation of overhead and benefit rates. Fees and charges comprise approximately 2.9% of general fund revenues. Total revenue derived from these fees, fines, and licenses is projected to be $570,630 exclusive of any of the proposed fee increases. And I put in your agenda report, and I think it's worth noting, that by way of comparison and as a reflection of efficiencies to the historical comparisons, and this is something that I looked back in previous staff reports from 2003, '04 fiscal year, the fees and charges totaled at that time, $590,810 and comprised 8.3% of the general fund budget. So over the years, we've really looked at gaining efficiencies in our work. So I'm not going to go through the whole fee schedule, but I'd just like to point out some items in the fee schedule. Certain fees, such as building-related fees and solar installation fees, are set by state code and are not based on the cost of providing the services. In many instances, these codes are not cost covering, these fees, excuse me, are not cost covering, but the city is unable to recover the full costs over the allowable levels as shown in state codes. The second item is related to appeals and appeal fees. In the current fee schedule, council has chosen to provide a reduced fee to appeal applicants, which is set at 50% of actual cost for staff time and processing of appeal applications. This year in the update, staff is recommending that the application fee be, the appeal fee be raised to recover the full cost of the appeal. This is in line with the council, the current council goal to revise and adopt changes to the appeals process. The next item is water service fees. Significant reductions have taken place in the service fees for assessments for delinquent payments and disconnections and other service-related fees. This is due to efficiencies gained through the implementation of our new software technology and conversion to monthly billing process. And I really want to make note that city staff deserves a vast amount of credit for the reduction in this particular area. During the software conversion, there were many comments received relative to the timeframe for conversion and the need for the conversion and the new software. Through the sheer due diligence of city staff, who spent countless hours in redefining procedures and implementing technology efficiencies, the results that are, are many of the water fees have been reduced up to as much as 68%. This is a direct result of having the technology of the software process many of the tasks that city staff used to do manually and which had been calculated within the fees. This is how the public benefits from staff's dedication and focus, and I really would give credit to city staff. I think this is really worth pointing out, that our new software, which did take a lot of time to implement, because we went line by line and process by process and procedure by procedure in getting it implemented correctly and looking at all of our processes, this is the result. It is the public benefit. And I just can't stress that enough, that while, you know, in some areas, it was questioned why we took so long, this is why. And I'm really, really proud of city staff for working through all the processes and this is the result. There are some new fees that we're bringing forward in this fee update, and it is a result of, again, looking and reviewing all the processes and procedures. They were, had not been in the previous fee schedule but are incorporated. There are five new fees and these are related to the news rack annual fee, public works service fee, the engineering deposits, backflow testing late notice fee, and a mobile home park rental application fee. Again, all of these are, fees are unique and specific to individual service requests. So I think that's important to note, that these are unique fees, they're not general fees and specific to requests. So after conducting the public hearing tonight, the council approves the updated fee schedule. The new fees will go into effect immediately, with exception to the planning fees, which by state law cannot go into effect for 30 days. And again, I really would like to say and give staff recognition to all city staff for preparation of this fee schedule. Every department manager is responsible for the review of their fees and updating their staff time for the individual services. Again, as you can see from the depth of the changes and the fees and the reductions to others, there have been many levels of efficiencies implemented over the year. And in particular, you know, I need to recognize our finance director, Deanna Hillbrants, who couldn't be here tonight because she's out of town at a finance conference. Deanna spearheaded this fee schedule project update and is really credited with the outcome. And my presentation tonight is based on her work and I want to publicly thank her for her excellence in preparing this tonight. So I'm benefiting from her work and I want to make that, I'm going to make that public that she deserves the credit for this. I'm just very proud to be able to lead this organization and the stellar work that all of our city employees do. So again, this is a public hearing to update the fees that will be in effect for this year of 2015.
Thank you, Mrs.
That concludes my report.
Givnato. Is there any questions for staff? Vice Mayor Gallion?
Yes, Carol, I think it's interesting on a historical perspective to discuss why we are doing this on a more current basis versus what we had done in the past.
Well, first off, again, this wasn't done for several years and really it was just something that- something that, quite honestly, we, we got behind on. We got behind on keeping up. We, and it's, it's critical that we do. It's critical that we keep up, because, again, you know, as I reported, all of these services should be based on, it's, it's a pass-through cost. We are providing unique services, and so we need to keep up with hat, with the cost of doing business and the services that we provide per the budget. Secondarily, and I think it's, you know, I think it's very well displayed here, we don't want to overcharge the public. And so, as we find efficiencies, those efficiencies get passed on to the public. And so, again, you know, we want to, we need to recover our costs by state law. That is something that we are bound to do, and recovering our costs for something other than general purpose. And secondarily, if there are reductions, then we need to also pass that on as well. So, keeping up with this, staying current, you know, as a follow-up to the budget process is something that is on our now standard operating procedures to do each year, and so you will see us come back each year. Again, you know, we, you may not see changes to fees, but again, it's something that we look at every year, and as a small, you know, as a small staff in, in a organization, you know, everybody, nobody wears just one hat. And so, we look at who, we may change and redirect workload and tasks, and that's what we look at, who's doing, you know, there may be change in how, you know, how jobs are being handled, how tasks are being handled, and we need to look at that in relationship of how the workload is distributed and, you know, who is, who is processing the work.
Thank you.
Is there any other council, councilmember Hundley?
I have a question about the appeals fee. Do cities ever separate the fee based on whether, if there was an appeal and it was overturned based on a mistake made, like a procedural error, versus if it's just a difference of opinions?
I presume.
For example, if a lower commission made a decision, but they perhaps applied the wrong standard or something, and made it a mistake that way, and then it, the council caught it and ended up changing the decision, would they still have to pay the $630 fee? Or do cities ever make a difference or refund the fee, or?
And we have, yes, and there is, there is a refund policy, and there is a refund policy on each one of these fees, and any, you know, anything is appealable. I mean, a fee could be appealable to the council. If, if the council overturned a decision, they found that there wasn't in, you know, that there was something that was incorrectly evaluated, the council at that point could, and it is only in the council's purview to refund a fee.
Thank you. Is there any other councilmember questions? If not, I would like to say, thank you. It was good reading. It took me all Sunday. No, I, I do want to say that I do like the format, and I think it made it really simple for me to see what the charges were before and after. So, even though it's a big document, it was well worth it. With that, I'll go ahead and open public comment. Is there any public comment? Looks like nobody's running to the, so I'll bring it back to council for discussion and action. Councilmember Hundley?
I appreciate the nice, clean format. It's a lot of numbers, and they're all very neatly organized. And I think it's fantastic that the new software for the water processing has turned out such big savings. I mean, it's anywhere from 68% less and 57% less, so it's really significant. So, thank you for painstakingly doing all of that.
Vice Mayor Gallion?
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to adopt a resolution of the city council of the city of Sonoma amending the previously adopted schedule of user fees, licenses, and permit charges for fiscal year 2014-15.
I'll second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. If we don't have any other council discussion, Vice Mayor Gallion?
I just have a comment, and I want to say it is a pleasure to put this item forward tonight, because I have been in the throes of something that has not been quite so pleasant. And I do remember that there was lots of discussion, lots of articulation. The method seems to be on the streamlining, which was with the wishes of previous councils to go ahead and actually see this as a benefit for both city and for community. So, I thank you very much to all involved, and I'm so glad that we updated that software. Thank you.
Is there any other comments? If not, city clerk, can we do a roll call vote?
Councilmember Edwards?
Aye.
Councilmember Gallion?
Aye.
Councilmember Hundley?
Aye.
Councilmember Agaramati?
Aye.
Mayor Cook?
Aye. With that, we went ahead and, and passed the new city fee schedule. We'll go to 6B, and I didn't bring my glasses, so I'm struggling here a little bit. Discussion and consideration of possible action on an ordinance amending the development code by prohibiting automated purchasing machines in the city of Sonoma. Planning Director Goodison?
Thank you, Mayor Cook, members of the city council. Automated purchasing machines, or APMs, are freestanding kiosk-style machines that enable the sale of cell phones, MP3 players, and similar devices for immediate cash. Although APMs feature some security features, it's the view of law enforcement that these are generally not sufficient to deter criminal exploitation, and some cities have reported an increase in theft of personal electronic devices in cities that permit APMs. The theft of such devices is already a problem in Sonoma, even without the addition of APMs, and further, the police department is concerned that the presence of APMs could bring thieves from other communities to Sonoma for quick cash, and once here, subject citizens to additional criminal acts. And for those reasons, the police department recommended to the city council that APMs be prohibited within city limits. And the council actually adopted an interim ordinance in order to allow time for permanent regulations to be developed back in October. So, it was directed by the city council. Staff prepared a draft amendment to the development code establishing a ban on APMs. This was reviewed by the planning commission in December, and on a vote of four to one to one, with one dissent and one abstention, the commission recommended that the amendment be adopted, subject to two suggestions. First, that the ordinance include a sunset provision, providing for its automatic expiration in five years. And the basis of that suggestion was that this is an area of technology that is changing very quickly, and it's certainly not, it's certainly quite conceivable that this, security measures of APMs will ultimately be improved to an adequate level. Their second suggestion was that the definition of an APM be broadened, and that just was out of a fairness consideration. As recommended by, by the planning commission, that definition has been revised. However, in consulting with the city attorney, it's been determined that a sunset provision is not possible. As under state law, a regulation that is established by ordinance may only be removed by the adoption of a subsequent ordinance, so we're not able to incorporate that particular suggestion of the planning commission. That said, we have incorporated the suggestions that we are able to in this draft ordinance, and we're recommending that the city council introduce it. Thank you.
Is there any councilmember questions? Vice Mayor Gallion?
Yes, I, I just have a question in, in reading this again, after my preliminary review. Say that some of these no longer exist in, in future years. We would have the ability to go back at some future time and amend the ordinance, or?
Oh, absolutely. That's always possible.
Right. If anything new came on board, we could go ahead and, and do that.
That's quite correct.
All right. Thank you very much. That's what I'm looking.
Thank you. Is there any other councilmember questions?
No, if there are no other questions or comments?
We'll go ahead and go out to public comment.
Oh, thank you. Sorry.
Is there anyone in the public that would like to comment? If not, we'll go ahead and bring it back to council for discussion and action on this item.
If there are other, no questions or comments, I'm sorry for jumping the gun. I would make a motion that we approve this.
I will second that motion.
We have a sec, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other councilmember comments or vice mayor comments? If not, I will ask the city clerk to call for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Edwards?
Aye.
Councilmember Gallion?
Aye.
Councilmember Hundley?
Aye.
Councilmember Agaramati?
Aye.
Mayor Cook?
Aye. And to let the public know, what we just did is we, we passed an ordinance amending the development code by prohibiting automated purchasing machines in the city of Sonoma. With that, we're going to go to our regular calendar on the city council, and item 7A, discussion, consideration, and possible action on the renewal of the lease of the youth center building located at 136 Mission Terrace to the Valley of the Moon Nursery School. If I could have Building Development Service Director, Building Official, Wyrick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the city council, on June 30th, 2015, the existing 18-month lease with the Valley of the Moon Nursery School for the youth center building will expire. The school would like to continue to lease the building on an annual basis with the flexibility to renew for an additional four one-year terms. The building department has conducted an inspection of the premises and has identified a number of items that need to be repaired or corrected for the continued long-term use of the building, as shown in Exhibit B of the staff report. While some of the items needing repair should be abated by the school, other repairs and improvements should be performed by the city, given the terms of previous leases. A proposed new lease, as shown in the supplemental report, has been prepared for city council consideration, the highlights of which are as follows. The term of the lease is for one year, beginning July 1st, 2015, with an option to renew for an additional four, four additional one-year terms. The lease rate has been increased from $822 per month to $832 per month, and will be adjusted annually by the average annual change in the Consumer Price Index. By March 31st, 2017, the school will need to complete code-required improvements designated as tenant responsibility in the 2012 building survey report that's in Exhibit B. By June 30th of 2020, the city will complete city responsibility code improvements, including certain Americans with Disabilities Act improvements that are designated in the survey report. All other terms and provisions of the lease remain substantially the same as the existing lease. The city capital cost to mitigate the current ADA and other code-related deficiencies is estimated to be approximately $86,900 over the next five years. Sufficient funds have been set aside and exist in the city's long-term building maintenance fund to make the necessary improvements and repairs. An analysis of the actual and projected income and expenses for the building between 1986 and 2020, including the future ADA improvement, shows that the city would realize an estimated net gain of approximately $27,400 if the lease is renewed through June 30th of 2020. Staff is recommending that the city council authorize the city manager to execute the proposed lease with the Valley of the Moon Nursery School. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Wyrick. Is there any council questions for staff?
I have.
Councilmember Agaramati?
Through the mayor, Mr. Wyrick, would you, the, the improvements that have to be made to this, to this property, that total $86,900 over the next five years, is there a schedule, or is it as needed?
There, we currently don't have it on a schedule, other than in the five-year capital improvement plan. That's been put on hold because of past council consideration in terms of what we were going to do with the building. But if we continue on this course, we will plug that into our city capital improvement plan, program, and get that scheduled for, to be completed by the deadlines.
Is there any other? Councilmember Hundley?
It's my understanding that this property was donated to the city, and that was with the specific instruction that it be used for the children of Sonoma. Can somebody talk about what that is, and sort of if it's required, or?
We don't have that specific information, other, in terms of how the building was supposed to be used, other than there's a plaque on the building that says it was dedicated for the youth of, of Sonoma.[1464.96][1464.96](phone ringing) But in terms of whether or not the, the building was donated to the city, that is
Is there any other councilmember questions? If, if not, I'm going to go ahead and open public comment on this item.
I'd be glad to speak on this. Peter Chernoff, here we are, 2015, in America, and the middle class is, and we're nickel-diming even situations that deal with our kids. The Fed and the IRS, which in my perception and understanding are criminal and illegal, of all the taxes and funds that these entities steal from the entire United States, they take a whopping 72% from California. And then, people like you, good people right here, are struggling and, and chiseling with nickels and dimes after having so much money stolen from us, that not only does this affect children, this affects, affects law enforcement, as they are made to beg for monies of which they are given with stipulations, and this whole situation is unacceptable. We have the ports shut down on the West Coast, and I've shared a prophecy for 21 years about a 40-day strike that walks us into the promised land, spoken of thousands of years ago, and seen by Martin Luther King. And I would ask you all, almost like a scene out of that movie with Mel Gibson, where you've got the war paint on, if you were given one day to make a change, or one opportunity to make a change, to actually have freedom, which none of us have ever seen, would you be willing to take that chance, and to know that we are at that point in time? California is the most powerful state in the world financially in 10 different ways. There's no other state that even comes close to us, and if there is going to be a new world order, well, we should be the ones in charge. And the only way that's going to happen is if we put our foot down, join the workers in shutting down this corruption, and cease funding our own demise. It is something that should resonate within our hearts, and know that the opportunity is before us. No one else is going to fix this for us, certainly not the politicians, certainly not Jerry Brown, who factually and verifiably should be in prison on a number of issues, including covering up of several murders, and the Cabazon Reservation case, and a, a number of other things he's been involved in. As a matter of fact, someone else made a mention of him having a speech. When he was supposed to deliver a, a talk with the, the person he was running against, Meg Whitman, for five months, they spoke about their, their radio discussion. They were going to have those two, live radio. Two days before, I handed out some information to two events in Marin County, two political events disclosing, and verifiably disclosing, the information regarding his cover-up of the Cabazon Reservation murders. Someone faxed it to Jerry, and he flat-out peed his pants and canceled the debate.
Thank you. Counsel, or Vice Mayor Gallion has a question for the attorney?
I, I just have a question for our attorney. In the matter of giving public comment on an item that we are talking about, such as this, does the public comment have to stay in context of the item that is being presented currently?
That's certainly, that's certainly the desired objective. Public comment on things not on the agenda has already occurred. To make the meeting more efficient and meaningful and productive, it would be very beneficial if the speakers limited their discussion to the items at hand.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. With that, I will open up again, public comment. And can I get a, a hands of how many people are going to be speaking on this subject? Thank you. I assumed you.[1736.41][1736.41](laughter) I wanted to see if he was going to raise his hand.
I think he's going to be shy. My name's Erin McTaggart. I live here in the city at 380 Church Street. I'm here to request that you guys do allow Valley of the Moon Nursery School, my alma mater, and my son's hopefully alma mater for next year, be granted a year-to-year lease in consideration that they provide a wonderful service to the kids, our future, your future gas pumpers and lawyers and things like that, that are privileged enough to live here in Sonoma. And I hope that you can support Valley of the Moon Nursery School. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you like Valley of the Moon?[1777.63][1777.63](laughter)
Thank you. At this time, we're at public comment. If, you have three minutes to speak on this item?
Good evening, council. Chris Petlock?
Yes, that is 426 Napier Road, Sonoma. I strongly encourage you to grant this lease, you know, um... Last year, I heard that-
Can I speak louder?
Can you speak louder? Is that, is that microphone on?
Oh, maybe this, no, I don't think it's on. So, anyway, last year, I heard that, my wife told me that the lease was only renewed for 18 months or something like that. And since then, the attendance at the school, from what we've understood, is just, or people are just unsure if this can go forward. I know a lot of you up here run your own businesses, and so, of course, you would understand how tough it would be to run a business without any certainty that whether or not you can stay where you were at. So I think it's really important, not only that you grant this lease for this year, but for a term that the school can provide some predictability, can take applications for future years. And we all have some certainty that we have good preschool childcare for our, for our children here in Sonoma. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there more public comment? Please state your name and your address. And speak up.
Oh, boy, I will, and you'll hear me. I wish people would speak louder. I got hearing aids, but they don't do a good job. I spoke about this before when it came up. That is the best preschool in the whole world for Sonoma County. When our daughter was born, she's 52, we didn't have not the money. It used to be called nursery school. But this preschool, I have babysat for free. My daughter's neighbors that went to the Sunshine, they are great kids. One of them is 21 now, the other's 18, the other's 12. And they went to the charter school. Now they're graduating from Sonoma High. And whatever it is, just pass this and let Rosemary Laney and her husband get approved. I would appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rosemary. Is there any other public comment on this item?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name's Robert Pickett. I live right across the street, actually, on Mission Terrace. And my son, Nadine, has been attending the Valley of the Moon Nursery School since early 2015. We've only lived in Sonoma since December 2014. And because of how my son's birthday falls, he isn't able to go to kindergarten until the fall of 2015. And so, we're looking for some kind of school to put him in a few days a week until he starts kindergarten. We tried Sunshine School, but there was a waiting list. And then we looked at two more schools, but we weren't convinced that those would be a good fit for our son. And so, right across the street from our house was Valley of the Moon Nursery School. And the only reason we didn't look at it sooner was because, for his age range, it was like Monday, Wednesday, Friday, he could go. So there was no Tuesday, there was no Thursday, and then it was only half-days. But I went over to check it out anyways, and I had a good feel of the place. It was clean, neat, organized. And when compared to the other schools we looked at, so that's why it was a good selling point for us. And then the staff was friendly, and Rosemary gave us a tour of the facility. I felt comforted that Valley of the Moon Nursery School has a higher level of security when compared to some of the other preschools we looked at. For me, it was a shock, coming from Southern California, to see how lax the security at some of these daycare centers are in Northern California. Tutor Time, for example, is where my son went in Castaia, California. They have an outside keypad before you even get in, and then there's a computer screen you have to log into when you get inside, and there's still a logbook on top of that. Now, Valley of the Moon doesn't have all those layers of security, but it still has more than some of the other places we checked out. They've already taught our son how to cut shapes with scissors. He never knew how to do that before. They're assisting us with teaching him how to write his letters. And besides crafts and playing outdoors, I believe they're assisting our kids with the skills they need to succeed in kindergarten later this year. There's other five-year-olds in there also waiting to go to kindergarten. And for all these reasons and more, I hope you'll renew the lease for Valley of the Moon Nursery School.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Could you state your name and your address?
Rebecca Wallace, 735 Vasquez Court. This is Ashley. We actually just started Valley of the Moon just a few weeks ago. Ashley was having some problems going to daycare, just bored out of her mind, wanted to stay home all the time. Took a look at it, went for an interview, and basically signed her up that week. They're very open-armed, welcoming her, understanding what she needed. Same thing, cutting was an issue. They're in there helping her with all of that stuff. She can't wait to go to school. She wants to go to school. This is only the first year for her, though, so where's she going to go next year? That's what our question is. She'd like to stay with the friends that she's made there, the friends that she loves there, as she's talking to all of them outside. So, we just want to be there at least one more year. So give us that chance. Okay, go ahead. What do you want to say? I love it.
We're listening.
Go ahead. Do you want to say something? Too many eyes. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Good evening, Council. My name is Zach Weinberg. I'm the owner of the Cottage Inn and Spa, 310 First Street East. We share part of our back fence line with the school. So on behalf of my business and the community, I just want to say that my interpretation of the school is that they've been an outstanding neighbor, and we sure hope that they remain part of our little neighborhood down there for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment on this item? I guess not. So I'm going to go, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment, and I'll bring it back to council for discussion and action. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Aggermonte?
Comments or questions? I would like to make motion to, for the renewal of the lease to the Valley of the Moon Nursery School.
Councilmember Hunley, you have a comment?
Yeah, I have a couple of comments. And just a procedure thing, I think that it would be helpful if we made motions at the end, because I feel like it stifles discussion when we put them in the beginning.
You know, actually, what we do a lot of times is, you can go ahead and make a motion. I would like to have discussion through, but sometimes that's how you state your opinion, if you're for or against by giving a motion, but-
Yeah, I noticed some of the commissions that go through and give all their opinions, and then at the end, the chairperson asks for a motion. And I feel like that way, everyone has their opinion, and it's not sort of leaning towards what the motion's going to be.
We are not the commission, we're the council. Is there any other?
I have a comment.
Oh, you said-
That was a predecessor. So I met with Mr. and Mrs. Laney, and we talked about this. And it sounds, the lease that we're passing sounds a lot like what they wanted. They're not really sure about the climate of the new preschool and kindergarten programs, so they wanted to be able to take it year by year to, to see if it's going to be, make sense for them to keep the school. So I'm glad that you have five more years of deciding each year whether you can continue. And I hope that when you decide to pass it on to someone else, that someone can fill your shoes, because I think it adds a lot to the community, having a preschool so close to our square. So, I support this.
Vice Mayor Gallion?
I just wanted to state, I will second the motion, and then, and then my comment. When this came to discussion the last time, under the previous council, it was definitely, for me, a very hard decision. Working in education, I see the value of actually having a program where you are learning in ages three to five. And if you're, if you're not five by September 1, you're kind of in this abyss. Some, some schools are offering the transitional kindergarten, but in a way, some, some children are not suited for that. Maybe parents don't want to do that at this point. In other words, this valley actually represents quite an advantage of having parents be at the ability of choice, choice of how they wish to go ahead and educate their child in preschool years. I understand the economics and the dynamics of this particular organization and what they're going through at this time. I felt it at that, at that point in the last council meeting when it came here, looking to have it extended. I am very heartened to see that our Facility Committee took that, those comments and everything that was said to, to heart, that our departments worked together, our city manager was on board. Everything came together so that there was a win-win for everyone involved. These are our children. How we educate them, how we raise them, part of that is our choice. And how we school them sometimes is by statute, but for the most part, parents should be a choice during this entire process. And I'm glad to see that we have kept an option for a parent to be a choice about this. Thank you.
Councilmember Edwards?
And I served on the Facilities Committee with Mayor Cook. I'm in favor of this extension and new lease, but I'm also in favor of moving forward with ADA work and get that done as soon as possible. And I think it's, with the years of rent that we've had from this facility, it's not like we're taking money out of, from something else. So I'd like to move forward on it as soon as possible.
Thank you, Councilmember Edwards. And I, too, would like to say that I am on the Facilities Committee, and I did sit up here on the City Council when this came to us a couple, a couple of years back. I want to say that city staff, especially Wayne Wyrick, did a, Wyrick, did a great job in the facilities, so I want to thank you for that. I know the first time it came, there was a lot of moving parts, and, and this was less painful. And I've always stated that the city is not a good landlord. I'm not retracting that statement, but I think that when city staff opens the discussion with the individuals and we go through this process, and we can see what the numbers are, it makes total sense. So I will be supporting this also. And if there's not any other council questions, I will ask this, oh, Councilmember Edwards.
I just want to thank all the parents for bringing their kids out tonight. It's great to see kids show up.
Yeah, it's great to have kids in the audience. And they even spoke. City Clerk, can we call for a roll call vote?
Councilmember Edwards?
Aye.
Councilmember Gallion?
Aye.
Councilmember Hunley?
Aye.
Councilmember Aggermonte?
Aye.
Mayor Cook?
Aye. And for public to know, what we did is we actually renewed the lease for the youth center building located at 136 Mission Terrace to the Valley of the Moon Nursery School. Thank you. And I'm going to go ahead and take a five-minute break to let the kids leave before we go into 7C, unless they want to stay for the fluoride issue. We are going to go ahead and open the City Council meeting. Back. We are on our last item for the night, which is Item 7C, Discussion, Consideration, and Possible Action to Authorize Correspondence to the Sonoma County Board of Directors, indicating the city's opposition to the proposed fluoridation program. This was requested by Mayor Cook. Could I have city staff?
Yes, and I will just do a brief intro to this item. Since 2010, the Sonoma County Department of Health Services, under the direction of the Board of Supervisors, has been researching and moving towards plans for a fluoridation program for Sonoma County's water distribution systems. That's the Sonoma County Water Agency. Presentations were made to the Sonoma City Council on both sides of this issue back in 2013, culminating in a request by former Councilmember Steve Barbos to place the consideration of sending a letter of opposition to the Board of Supervisors on the county's proposed water fluoridation plan. However, no formal action has been taken by the City Council in that regard, since the plan is not yet complete. Mayor Cook did request this item be placed on the council agenda upon being contacted by Donna Gallagher Stowe, who is the director of the Clean Water Sonoma Marin, a nonprofit organization. So this item is on the agenda for your consideration as to whether you wish to send a letter of opposition. That concludes the staff's report.
Thank you, Mrs. Givinato. Is there any council questions for staff? If there's no questions for staff, I'll go ahead and open public comment at this time. At this time, anybody can speak for three minutes. Please state your name and your address.
Rose Marie Pedronzini, 437 Second Street West. I spoke about this the last time it came up, and I am really against it. All this money, we've got fluoride in our toothpaste. My daughter, when she was little, from the pediatrician in Santa Rosa, which she's now 52, gave her fluoride pills. We brushed with Crest toothpaste. She rode her bicycle, I said this before, to the dentist here in Sonoma. She's 12-years-old, and she came home and said, "Mom, the dentist wants to talk to you." Okay, I went down, took her in the car, and he's still in practice, and he said, "What kind of a mother are you? Your daughter has 12 cavities." I said, "How could it be? I use Crest. She's been fluoride pills. She had 12 cavities." This fluoride stuff, if you read, I read a lot, it's toxic. It is really toxic. There's a lot of formaldehyde in it. Yes, the dental people want it because they're going to make more money. This is a heck, H-E-L-L, a lot of money for the county of Sonoma to pay to put fluoride in the water. And I read one article in the paper, "We get our water from the wells up on the hill." This is really dum-dum. And I'm going to quit, but I've just been told tonight by certain people here that I always come and talk about Benny. Why haven't I introduced him? So I could bring up Benny and let you know who the guy Benny is I'm talking about?
Benny can have three minutes, yes.
Okay, get up, honey. Come on. Good for you.
Hi, Benny.
Come on.
She throws you on the bus every other Monday, so you do deserve a hand.
No, he's not going to say anything. I've been motor mouth for him for 55 years.
You're just trying to take his three minutes.
I just heard you all are talking, she's doing fine.
He wants to put duct tape, and last night, the Sons of Italy, he told one of the gentlemen across, "Put duct tape on her mouth. She talks so darn much, she'll chew it up and then talk." Thank you.
Thank you. We are at public comment. Is there any other public comment? And just out of curiosity, how many, how many people are going to be just talking on this? Okay, thank you.
My name is Bonnie Faulkner. I live in the unincorporated area of Sonoma, up on Cave Dale. Actually, I'm on Wellwater. I would like to encourage you to go ahead and send that letter to the Board of Supervisors opposing the fluoridation of the water in Sonoma County. There are many, many reasons to oppose this, and there's not enough time, of course, to go through them all, but fluoride is not a nutrient, a number one. Number two, the fluoride that would be put in the drinking water is not pharmaceutical grade. It's not the fluoride that naturally occurs in the environment, but it is a toxic byproduct of industry. And if you put it in the drinking water, you're forcing everyone to ingest it, whether they want it or not. So you're eliminating free choice. It's very expensive. The taxpayers are going to have to maintain the system. So I would urge you to go ahead and send that letter. I'm hoping you do oppose the fluoridation of the water. It's very expensive. It's going to cost a lot of money to poison us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Winkar Sitch, and I came up here from Hayward. And last night, I was in East Palo Alto talking about fluoridation, and Jackie Spears had one of her persons there. And anyway, the fact is, is that hydrofluorosalonic acid is phosphate fertilizer waste. This is the, like the air pollution that comes out of the scrubbers of the fertilizer industry. And we purchase this stuff from China. Where I live, on the East Bay, is Alameda County Water District purchases this poison, and they put it in sonol, and it goes halfway up the peninsula. And Jackie Spears wrote her bill in 1995 to fluoridate the rest of the state. That's why you're even discussing this right now. She took away our right to vote. She took away everything, and she's playing doctor. So when a politician plays doctor, and they're offering you a phosphate fertilizer waste with lead and arsenic in it, Jackie Spears was at East Palo Alto, and I gave her the Fluoride Deception book to give her the history on fluoride and why this is such a big cover-up. And I asked her on public record, I said, "How is drinking a waste product with lead and arsenic in it safe to drink?" And she says, "There's numerous studies that it reduces cavities." And I said, "I just, I didn't ask you that." I said, "I ask you how drinking arsenic and lead in a hazardous waste product that is controlled by the EPA, not the FDA," I said, "It is poison." And she once again, "It reduces cavities." Well, what it does is it increases cancer death rates. Arsenic at 50 parts per million will kill 1 in 100 people with cancer. Gina Solomon, in 2005, wanted to reduce the arsenic levels down to 10 parts per million. And a lot of water companies couldn't do that, because it's, it's about $30,000 to have some kind of machine to pull the arsenic out, when you're putting arsenic in the water in fluorosalonic acid. So it's kind of defeating the purpose. Plus the fact, the number-one crop that has most fluoride on it is wine crops, you know, grapes. And you've got enough of that up here. So if you've got Wellwater, and you're spraying the wine crops with a pesticide with fluoride in it, and it goes into the groundwater in your wells, you don't need to add any more fluoride. Plus the fact, too, tea is also the big one- Plus the fact, too, tea is also the big one that has the most fluoride. In the Bay Area, we're recycling the toilet water. I don't know if you're blending your groundwater with recycled toilet water, but we're sure doing it down there. And if you can't get the medicines out, think of all the medicines that already have fluoride in it. We have, you know, medicines like all the antidepressants, Prozac, Zoloft, Paxil, they all got fluoride in it. And then we have these antibiotics that are fluoroquinolones, and if you get pneumonia, that's what they give you, Cipro, Lavaquin, that's got fluoride in it, too. So everybody that goes to the bathroom, and it goes down in the wastewater treatment plant, and you recycle their medicines that you can't get out of the water, on top of all the toothpaste that goes down the drain, the fluoridated dental gels that go down the drain, and you've got all of the, you know, you think of everything that's got fluoride in it that goes down the drain, we're recycling it and drinking it again. So why on earth would you add any more fluoride to the water at all? And what they did in Alameda County, they used to put 59 tons of this in the water. And most of the children that live in Fremont, Union City, and Newark have dental fluorosis.
I'll give you about 10 more seconds.
And dental fluorosis is big money for the dentist, because when they have to get these spots and these brown spots off these kids' teeth because they're all trying to bleach them, first of all, my children have that. And it also causes bone spurs, and when people get older, these things grow on their feet, and there's a lot of people having bone spurs cut out of their feet. I was crippled. I've had three foot operations because of it.
Good, well, thank you.
And this is one thing, too. Nursery water with fluoridation, this needs to be pulled off the shelf, because why would you give medicine to a toothless baby when it can reduce its IQs?
Yeah, and thank you for coming all the way from Hayward. We don't clap here in the City Council chambers, but if you do agree, you can do that, and the council will know that, that you are supporting the speaker. If you could state your name and address in three minutes.
Peter Alexander Charanoff, Sonoma County at Large. I heard what you said after my, my last speak in regards to staying on the topic, and I'm going to respond this way. To address only the specific symptomology of a specific topic which be currently in distress while avoiding the cause at the core be nonsensical, serving only to maintain this mess. An intelligent conversation absolutely requires all the true facts, so as not to be goaded or either railroaded, so we may respond and often act. We were born into a world of lies, a land of deceiving lawyers and their alibis. The chemical composition was altered in the mid-1980s regarding chlorine. They never told the public this, dangerous and obscene. To fluoridate our water be by design via the Federal Agenda 21. Common sense demands, as the spirit within us commands, that we shine as the sun. Jerry Brown's Agenda 21 includes fluoride in the chemtrails, which have, besides the problem for children and anybody else drinking, has also been responsible for many of California fires. Because the chemtrails are a 20-year-plus Monsanto terraforming project. And along with the chemical compositions, which are altering the soil structures and the water compositions in the lakes with fish kills, even in the bays, which have been made public in all the newspapers, they have also laid down huge swaths of fire accelerants to burn people off the land and bring them into the cities. This is a fact. It was on the news when they were fighting one of the fires just about a month or two ago, and, and this is right after I had a conversation with 20 firefighters. They were putting down the fire deterrents, that red stuff from the, from the planes. And they were saying on the news that it wasn't stopping the fires at all because of the chemicals that were laid down that made the fires burn faster and hotter. This is why the 23 firefighters in Arizona were killed. This is why several firefighters, including the pilot for the CDF, was killed. The responsibility is Jerry Brown's for these deaths. And so I say to you and anybody listening that there is only one common sense response, and that is to say no to this fluoride. And if you have any other reason to proceed otherwise, it is simply because you have been ordered so from other locations above. And again, these are people like Jerry Brown, who takes his orders from the biggest pedophile in California, Cardinal Mahoney, and this is what's going on nationwide. 22 years ago, when I was told by several top-level investigators that much of this country is run by organized, organized, powerful lethal pedophiles, I found it very difficult to believe.
I'm going to give you five more seconds.
And yet I have found without a doubt that this is true, and I wasn't born to be a slave to pedophiles, bankers, or lawyers. Were you?
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Hi, Judith, I am from West Sonoma County. I am deeply gratified to hear that you have your opposition as a letter awaiting your approval. Most of the informed people who I speak with about fluoride just roll their eyes with the frustration of being informed and still having to discuss this in 2015. 97% of Western Europe does not fluoridate, as neither does China, India, or Israel. Countries that fluoridate do not have more, do not have less tooth decay. 40% of American teens who are fluorid, are drinking fluoridated water show visible signs of overexposure. For infants, it's only risk because it's not something which is, should be ingested, but only topically applied. For elders, post-menopause women, anybody with any thyroid issues and kidney patients, it would be a forced medication. The only way to get it out would be a very expensive reverse osmosis machine, which is prohibitively expensive to most people. The FDA has never approved fluoride supplements. It's the only medicine that is added to public water. The infrastructure costs, I noticed your last item for council goals is water.
That's actually an alphabetical order. I always tell people that.
Okay. Very rarely is the infrastructure that goes down after, several years after fluoride is put into the water supply budgeted for, but it corrodes pipes. And that's, can you imagine what it does to biology? And so my own wanting to come and eat and drink in the delightful town of Sonoma would be very curtailed because chlorine evaporates, fluoride sinks and concentrates with cooking and with wine-making and everything else. So it also accrues in bones, joints, in the brain, leading to Alzheimer's and all kinds of brain degeneration, adversely affects fertility, has shown to be connected with bladder cancer and numerous other ailments. So there's every reason not to put fluoride in our water. So thank you very much for the wisdom of this, I hope, the wisdom of this impending decision to recommend that our county not fluoridate our water. Thank you.
Thank you. We are still on public comment.
Hello, my name's Dr. Dan Kittleson. I live here in Sonoma and practice in the city limits, and I've been doing so for 35 years. So you can well imagine, I've seen quite a few teeth. And I have many patients I've been able to manage, from young children through their teens and into adulthood, who, who I've recommended systemic fluoride with supplements. And virtually all my patients take that advice, the parents do. And I'm concerned, I would like to see a fluoridation process in the county. I am convinced that the studies are, show that, decades of research show that it's safe. I am concerned about access to care for many patients who do not receive, or do not get to the dentist often enough and are not getting their prescription fluoride. I see patients that come in less frequently or coming from other areas and do not have fluoride and have not been going to the dentist regularly, and they have a lot more cavities and a lot more, a lot more problems. And basically, I'm, I'm supporting this because my goal is to put myself out of business. And if I, if I'm true to my prevention philosophy, that I, that I want my patients to be as healthy as possible, I, I would like to see fluoridation in the water system. I encourage you to, the, my understanding, I was surprised to see this on the agendas now at this point in time with the new council members who perhaps have not had as much information as, as was presented in 2013. I'm also aware that the county's fluoridation advisory committee is not finished with their, with their conclusions, and I would urge you to wait until you hear all of their conclusions. I don't think there's any rush to get this letter sent today anytime soon. The system isn't going to be in place for a while, and so I would encourage you to wait and get all of the facts, and I'd also be happy to talk with any, with any of you about what I've seen here in Sonoma. Thank you.
My name, oh, my name is Martin Van Tassel. I'm the Executive Director of the Redwood Empire Dental Society. I live in Petaluma. Our organization represents over 80% of all dentists in Sonoma Lake and Mendocino Counties, and I'm also on the fluoridation Advisory Committee. And I will underscore what Dr. Kittleson has just pointed out, that no decision has been rendered yet. The matter is still being reviewed, and the meetings are still underway. So at the very least, this is a premature action. So I, with that, I yield my time. Thank you.
My name is Tom Hauser. I live and work here in Sonoma. I think fluoridation is probably something that would be very good for a lot of the people in Sonoma. I read that the poor dental health of a lot of the poorer people in our society is one of the major, major issues that we're facing. When the health center was built out there, and I toured it, I noticed that they had facilities for dentists in there, simply because that is such a major issue in our society right now. And I, as was just said, this is premature for sure in Sonoma to be doing, copping out on this, saying you're too small or something, whatever it is, kind of a legal point of I really think this would be a disservice to many of the people in this town who don't have a lot of money, who don't go to dentist on a regular basis. I know when my children left my house and they grew up, they didn't have a cavity because they've been taken care of very well. But there are a lot of people who don't have that advantage, and I think we need to look out for them and not just the upper-middle-class people. Thank you.
Gail Hartman from Oakmont, and I am hoping you will send that letter to the Board of Supervisors opposing fluoridation. I have many reasons for that, but I'll just single out one. As the previous speaker mentioned, the Health Department is promoting fluoridation because they say we have a dental crisis among poor children in Sonoma County. Interestingly enough, LULAC, which stands for League United of Latin American Citizens, that's the oldest and largest advocacy group for Latino people in this country, they put out a resolution several years ago against fluoridation. Their reason is that minority communities are more highly impacted by kidney disease. If your kidneys are compromised, you're not able to excrete adequately fluoride, and it tends to concentrate in the bones, leading to arthritic and other bone-related diseases. So it's interesting that this is being promoted for the poor children of Sonoma County, but the Latino organization is against it. Also, the Sonoma County NAACP is against it for the same reasons, that minority communities are more impacted by kidney disease. So I think that's something you need to take into consideration in your conclusions here.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Hi, good evening. My name is Anthony Fernandez, and I am a resident of 1250 East MacArthur Street here in Sonoma. I'm also a practicing dentist. I am the Chairman of the Redwood Empire Dental Society's Fluoridation Committee. So we've been looking at this issue with the county and our professional counterparts at UCSF in our profession, and in a long deliberative process to look at the concept of bringing the benefits of water, community water fluoridation to the, to the people of Sonoma County. To take three minutes to cover the efficacy, the safety, and the great track record that community water fluoridation has been over the last almost 70 years would be, you can't do it in three minutes. But we would like to take this opportunity to thank you for looking at the subject, and we would like to take this as an opportunity rather than sending a message against, but rather an invitation for you to look at the subject from all different points of view, to be deliberative, to represent the people of the community, and something that's very important, as a dentist, I see the destruction of tooth decay. It's something that's real to me. It's not just a concept, and I would never advocate something that's not safe and effective. My friend Tom Rouse and I talked about this last body's concerns over cost-effectiveness, not just safety, but does this work? Is there other alternatives the counties can put their money toward? And even just the fluoride pills alone are almost $50 a year for a child. It's much more, it's $2 a person roughly for community water fluoridation. So there's nothing more safe or effective than community water fluoridation. It's automatic, and it reaches every tooth, everybody, every day. So we like to offer this opportunity to be open for information. If you guys have any questions, we'd like to offer assistance to you before you would produce a letter that would be in opposition without really hearing from both sides. We were also spearheading the, the group in Healsburg. When this issue came up to the town, the group that's advocating you putting a letter out in opposition, they were up in Healsburg also, and they put Measure P on the ballot. And we went up there, and we did our due diligence, and the people, they looked at the facts, and when they came to the voting booth, Measure P passed 66% in favor to continue the process of community water fluoridation, as they've been doing since the 1950s. And the children's teeth are fine. And it's just, and community water fluoridation is for everybody. It's not just for children. Whether you're nine or 90, community water fluoridation is effective and it's safe. And we'd be glad to talk to you about, you know, specifics if you want to. So before we act, let's let the county go through their process. That way, when you make your informed decision, you will really be doing that, making an informed decision based on facts, not just from any special interest group, but a broad variety of citizens, community leaders, groups that have an interest in this. So let's just make this an invitation rather than a declaration tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess there's no money in floss anymore.
I'll try to do it in three minutes. My name is Dr. Laura Gata Wilson, and I'm a dentist in Santa Rosa, California. I'm a colleague of Anthony's. We share a building together in Santa Rosa. And I am very concerned about water fluoridation. There are no safety studies done for the fluoride that's put into the water supplies. It's artificial water fluoridation. There's two kinds, and there are no safety studies for humans or animals. We've asked repeatedly to see these studies. 50 years of fluoridation, no safety studies. After 35 years of fluoridating, the National Dental Research Institute spent $4 million on a study, it's the biggest one ever done, on its efficacy. 39,000 subjects, a big study in dentistry or medicine is 600. And the result of that study was there was no significant difference in decay reduction in fluoridated versus non-fluoridated communities. So think about that with cost and compare that to dollar store toothpaste, where in a pea-sized amount of the toothpaste, there's 22,000 more available fluoride ions in that toothpaste than there is in the water. For people that cannot have it, and there are many groups that cannot have this in the water, they will be forced to spend at least $4,000 on a reverse osmosis system in their homes. In Europe, it's required that they label the bottled water fluoridated. In the United States, they don't. In order to know if you're drinking fluoridated water in your bottled water, you must go online and Google search. and Google, search and produce a list to see which water's fluoridated and which isn't, which means there's absolutely no way to control the dose. This is wrong. We can get our fluoride much more cheaply and much more safely and I would also speak to the destruction of the infrastructure system with the fluoridation and the pipes that came up in Healsburg when I worked up there. And there were also families up there who were born and raised up there who also told us that their children, who after having been born and lived there, had mouthful of cavities. So I'd like to see the studies about the efficacy of how it works up there, too.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
I'm Dave Chambers, 19800 Seventh Street East in Sonoma. Thank you for what you do. I've sat up there before and I know that somebody comes in before all these meetings and takes all the easy jobs and puts them away. I'm not a dentist. I am however, a professor and former academic dean at the University of the Pacific Dental School. I'm an officer of the American College of Dentists. I want to say, first of all, that fluoride is safe and that it is effective. Now you can go online and find anything you want that agrees with that or disagrees with that. I urge you not to go online. Ask somebody you trust, like your family physician. They'll tell you. And if you have a good relationship with a family physician, you'll believe them. There is however, a good argument against public water fluoridation and I'm sympathetic to that argument. It has to do with individual liberties and free choice. Putting it in the water for everybody compromises that. Now, in American society, we face these problems all the time. It's inherent in our system that there will be conflicts between individual choice and community good and you guys have to make those decisions. Sometimes the decision goes in the favor of the individual. Women get abortions and people go crazy over it. But that's an individual choice that society says they can have. Jehovah's Witnesses can withhold blood transfusions from their children, even in cases where those would save those children's lives. Those are individual choices and America said, "We will favor the individual." In other cases, the democratic process says, "No, we'll favor the community." No one can drive as fast as they want to. We have a rule that we all have to drive a certain level, whether we want to or not. Reading books in school. We don't get to choose the ones we want. Nudity, regardless of individual choice, you have to follow the rules. Okay, you will have to make that choice. I won't. A little bit of context, just one point, and I worked with the school district on this and with the public literature. Fluoride won't help very many of us in this room because, you know, our teeth have stopped growing. You're going to get cavities primarily under places where the dentist is already taking care of it. You won't get new cavities. It's going to affect the children.
I'll give you about fifteen seconds.
Okay. The estimate is that fluoridating the public water will save twenty dollars a year for each school child based on their attendance at school versus absence. That means in the county of Sonoma, there will be one and a half million dollars worth of savings every year.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Yes, Robert Adams. I live in Sonoma and have business in Sonoma and I'm just here to suggest that we strongly consider not supporting this resolution for fluoridation in water. My main reason is certainly a public choice opportunity and I think that it's a mistake to force something that's so controversial into people's lives. The other thing is, you know, fluoridation is a good process when it's applied topically. Every dentist that you speak to will acknowledge that is the most effective way to reach it. Most of the water that would go, this fluoridated water would go down the drain, out the sewers, into our vegetation, into our streams and rivers. It's been established up in Oregon quite well that the fish do not like fluoride in the water, even small parts. That's why Oregon rejected it. So, safety issues, put it topically, it's better to be controlled. It is a controlled substance. Patients just don't go buy fluoride pills because they are dangerous and that's why they have to get a prescription for them. And so I think choice is important. The other thing is, it really is a safety issue. This is a toxic waste that is a liability to the commercial industry that becomes a benefit when they give it and put it back in the water. There's a difference between this fluoride that they will put on us and the natural occurring fluoride, which is calcium fluoride as opposed to the chloride. The other issue is, I would encourage you to actually read, and you can go on the internet and go to pubmed.gov and type in there, "Dangers of Fluoride." There's some really good studies that are published that indicate that the fluoride that is absorbed into children's brains actually retards them. So there's a relationship with the amount of fluoride in a person's body and their mental acuity and that was established pretty well. Some good studies on that. So check it out, pubmed.gov. It's a nice neutral site there. So we just need to be informed. I think we, as parents and as community people, need also to respect the personal choice and that's basically what I'd like to say today. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Yes, thank you. James Bennett. You know, as I get older and having adopted this insatiable appetite for the truth, I'm realizing that we've all been deceived beyond our current understanding. And the reason we've all been deceived beyond our current understanding is because our whole information construct is, in terms of news and information, is owned by a handful of people that are largely behind pretty much everything that is wrong. In terms of news media, these iconic institutions that have been around for a hundred years in print, magazines and television, in mainstream media, are dying on the vine. And the reason is because people want the truth. While conversely, alternative media, for lack of a better term, is absolutely exploding. Now I hate that tired term, "Follow the money." But when you do your homework and I urge you to do your homework on another subject which runs very much parallel to fluoridation, which is vaccines, and that's going to be about the biggest subject of our time here, real quick, the dynamics are very similar in that there is a payoff in promoting them. So, when you look at the avalanche of information out there in the world about vaccines and fluoridation, try to think about the motivations for speaking against fluoridation and vaccines. There's no money largely in speaking against fluoridation and vaccines. I urge you, and you know, the whole, the planet is largely accepted and banned fluoridation and vaccines and the amount of information, once you get outside corporate-controlled media on these two subjects, I mean, you'd have to take a month off work to even start. So I would urge you to not put corrosive industrial waste, neurotoxin in your constituents' bodies or in the water table. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there, Fred?
Yes, Fred Alabac, 195508 Street East. I don't particularly have a dog in this fight, but I'm a keen observer of public policy and I've watched people come up through many issues and say what the facts are. So as I'm sitting in the audience, I hear some people saying it's a toxic waste and other people saying that it's safe. So I don't know how you all are going to gloss that up there to make your decision tonight if you haven't already figured out where you stand on it. And so when I hear one side talking about chemtrails and what was the other, oh, Agenda 21, I started thinking, well, that's not quite as factual as bodies of evidence about scientific things like public health and measles and fluoride. So just as a member of the audience and somebody who's watching public policy, I do understand the freedom of choice argument that people have about vaccines and fluoride, but also I think that the public health argument is pretty strong, too. So as you're making your decision on this, as a person in the audience, you know, I had fluoride as a kid and so I don't have brain damage or, you know, all this stuff. So I'm like still here and I feel like I'm still pretty sharp, but you know, maybe not.
Fred, you're killing us. No.
I don't know. But anyhow, so I would say that, you know, tough decision.
Thank you, Mr. Alabac.
Good evening, Mayor Cook and Sonoma City Council members. My name is Dr. Karen Milman and I'm the new Sonoma County Health Officer. I apologize that I have not had a chance to meet any of you prior to this meeting. My job entrusts me with the responsibility of the health of the county and it is in that venue that I'm here tonight to share with you my concern about this silent epidemic of dental disease in Sonoma County, as well as share with you the status of the current evaluation that is going on at the county level. The Department of Health Services did a 2014 Sonoma Smile Survey, which was a dental assessment of the health of kindergarteners and third graders in schools throughout the county. The findings are very troubling. More than half of the children in our county have dental decay and nearly one in five of the children that were seen at that time had untreated dental decay. Four percent of them had severe decay such that it was visible to the extent that the naked eye could see that there was decay and infection. Also disturbing is the fact that there's an unequal distribution of dental disease affecting low-income and Latino children, far greater degree than the higher-income and white children. Dental disease is entirely preventable. The Department of Health Services is actively engaged in programs and campaigns to promote what we call the Five Pillars of Dental Health. These include access to dental care, education on the importance of dental health to overall health, as well as what behaviors ones can take to help promote their dental health, the application of fluoride varnishes, the placement of sealants, and community water fluoridation. Each of these pillars works in unique ways to help improve dental health. Of the five pillars, we are missing a crucial element in Sonoma County, the very effective, safe, and economical public health measure of community water fluoridation. Community water fluoridation continues to be the most effective and socially equitable means of reducing tooth decay at a population level in both adults and children. Systematic reviews have determined that community water fluoridation reduces tooth decay by an average of twenty-nine percent in children and twenty-seven percent in adults. The Centers for Disease Control estimates that there's a savings of thirty-eight dollars for every one dollar that is invested in community water fluoridation. The Sonoma Department of Health Services wanted to look at our local data about this and so we did an economic analysis of some of the costs related to dental health in Sonoma County. Based on Sonoma County's age distribution and health distribution, we estimate that there are about four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand new cavities every year. If we were able to reduce those, that would be a reduction of a hundred-and-twelve-thousand cavities. The average cost of a simple filling is two-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars. So this would save the county nearly thirty-two million dollars a year. At this time, the county is carefully gathering and reviewing information on the very safe and effective method of community water fluoridation. We have an open process with the Community Fluoridation Advisory Committee. No decisions or recommendations have come forth from the committee, nor has the Board of Supervisors made any decisions on a number of the issues about how this process would work. So I would hope that you would take a chance to work with the county on voicing what your concerns are as we go through what the next assessments are and figure out how we can do this, go forward with this process before you take a vote in favor or against it.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Good evening. So my name is Donna Gallagher, Santa Rosa. I don't envy you at all as a former city councilperson in Roner Park. I know you have to sit through a lot of stuff and it is hard to make decisions. I'm here to make sure, as a nutritionist and as on the groundwater management team for Sonoma County, that right now, in a low quantity of water, it's really a bad time to put any kind of a chemical in it and I know you've done your groundwater management and I really applaud you. You know how valuable that is. I want to make sure you are aware that you're not alone in sending a message to the Board of Supervisors. The Sonoma County Water Agency does not want to fluoridate. The North Marin Water District has already made their feelings known. They do not want to fluoridate and will fight it with probably a lawsuit. Marin Municipal Water District already has fluoridation and they get twenty-five percent of the water from Sonoma County, presenting a complication that will be another suit. Cotati already voted it out. Right now, Roner Park is seriously looking at this because they have twenty-nine wells. They too do not qualify according to AB 733. It would be extraordinarily expensive for them to try to put the dose in after the Sonoma County Water Agency water comes to them. Most of, all the cities in Sonoma County do not qualify under AB 733, which is probably why Sonoma County has never fluoridated as a whole. We're lucky because we have goals like taking it from the tap, trust your tap water, and also a goal to be one of the healthiest cities in the state of California. We can reach that goal if we don't fluoridate because there is not one single solitary, randomized study for safety of ingestion. I've called Mosaic, Solvar, and Univar. Those are the three providers of the proposed chemical that is in the engineering report that you and I have already paid for. The county is trying to get you to slow down because they've already spent a million dollars on propaganda to pediatricians and throughout the community, without you knowing, to try to get them to be onboard to fluoridate. Now, if there was such an urgent need, a four percent of the population that's urgently needing care, that a million dollars would have gone a long way to getting those kids' access and no amount of fluoride, not topically or drank, and it's going to get rid of baby bottle tooth decay, which is what we're seeing in the poorer communities. Education, nutrition, I'm a nutritionist. I have supported our county, I'm concluding, I heard that.
You have thirty seconds.
Okay. Well, I want you to know that I have completely met with Dr. Milman and Rita Scarducci many times. I'm completely supportive of their other four pillars of dental health. We pay a half a million dollars for a mobile unit that goes out and helps kids in outreach areas. For seventeen million dollars, how many more of those can we have? That's the price tag. There's no cost savings. There's no one dollar spent, thirty-eight dollars saved. It's seventeen million to put the pipes in and a half a million every year to pour the toxin in.
Thank you.
That's not a cost savings. So you're doing the right thing. I appreciate you. You're not alone.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Hello, Will Pierre. I live in El Dorado and I'd like to just say that with education and good information, people can make a choice about whether they want the fluoride or not. And so I really hope you send that letter opposing fluoride in the county water and let people make their own choice. Thanks.
Thank you, Will. Is there any other public comment? If not, I'm going to go ahead and bring it back to the council and since I brought this up, I will like to be the first one to speak. This did come to the council once before and it was well-vetted and I just want everybody to know that came out tonight, I appreciate it and I've talked to a lot of people. I have friends on both sides. I might not have a dog in this fight, is what I tell a lot of people. I oppose fluoridation, but probably because different reasons than most that are in this room. I do know the city of Sonoma is going to possibly take water from the Russian River. They're going to bring it down our pipeline and we're going to put it into our wells at some point. And if there's fluoride in there, I would assume the city of Sonoma would be unable to do that practice and that's probably my number one. And that's probably my number one. Premature, I've heard that. I don't think it's premature because we're sitting here in a drought situation and we're trying to figure out what we're going to do in the future. And Sonoma could be in trouble with water. Taking water from the Russian River during the wintertime, which is being proposed, and bringing it into our wells right here, north, is probably something that will probably have to happen in the city of Sonoma, at least in the next 20 years. And I just feel that the fluoridation does get in the way of that. But for my colleagues on the council, to let them know that the money that is being spent on fluoride would probably be better spent in our schools. I talked to city staff today to see how much water, what percent, I want to know what percent gets drank in the city that I live in and that I'm the mayor of. City staff came back and told me it's less than 1% would hit its target. That concerned me because that means there's 99% of it going down the drain. It's going into our lawns. And I have a lot of friends from Hillsburg who are on the council and I've talked to them. I mean, and I know that Hillsburg just did an election and the people spoke that voted. And, you know, that's Hillsburg. We're Sonoma. They're right next to the Russian River. They don't have to worry about their water supply going into these wells. So with that, I do want to leave my colleagues on the council to know that I support sending a letter of opposition about fluoride. I think the county of Sonoma has better things to do with their time and energy at this point. And is there any other council member, Hunley?
So I think especially since this was on the news this morning and it was in a lot of newspapers, I heard from a lot of people about this in the last couple of weeks. And I even posted on my Rachel Hunley City Council Facebook page and got a lot of other voices of people who don't typically come to city council meetings. And I was trying to get kind of a pulse of what the general community felt. And I even went as far as just walking down the square and just like asking people that I knew lived here, like, what do you think about this? What do you think about this? And overwhelmingly, I would say probably 90% of the people I talked to oppose adding fluoride to our water and they seemed to actually be kind of proud of the fact that we've managed to not have it this far. But the reason that they, a lot of them gave, including a lot of people, I would say for my generation, this was a strong feeling, wasn't necessarily because they contested the benefits of fluoride, but they believed that it was not essential to add it to our water and that now that there's better fluoride products available, they would like to be able to control how much and how often that they use fluoride. And somebody in the audience mentioned the idea of individual liberties and free choice. And I think especially when it comes to something as essential as water and something that we put inside of our bodies, people feel strongly that they should be able to choose the things that they put in that are nonessential. And I feel led to be the voice that can be in this regard. I'm not totally convinced this particular letter at this time is the right step. I would like to take whatever my colleagues think is the best step in expressing this voice, so I'm interested in hearing about that. And also, my question about the process is, will there be a time when, after the Board of Supervisors conducts their study or comes up with their plan, that they are going to solicit opinions from the cities?
I can, through the mayor, does city staff want to answer that question now or do you need some time?
The Water Technical Advisory Committee has a representative on the Fluoridation Advisory Committee as well. And at some point, that will come to the Water Advisory Committee upon which Council Vice Mayor Gallion sits. And that will be the opportunity for the city to weigh in on the Fluoridation Advisory Committee's recommendation.
Thank you, Dan. Do you have any other discussion items? We can always come back if you do. Councilmember Aggermonte?
It's interesting, you know, I was trying to keep up with the, you know, LULAC, NAACP, they say no. I guess safety studies, Europe doesn't have fluoride, Hillsburg's kids are still getting tooth decays. A lot of things I wrote down here. And one of the things I noticed when we were looking at those five pillars, and I don't know if I got them totally correct, but most involve money and poor people don't have money to have these applications of fluoride or sealants. So those things are not available to poor children. And I have a personal concern about that. The other thing is, today I had to make a decision and I don't like making decisions when I don't have all the information. So what I say, which is something I've done for many, many years, I'd rather give a slow yes than a quick no. And I don't have enough information to be able to send a letter at this point.
Councilmember Edwards.
Okay. So being in the food business, I have a couple of concerns. One of my best clients in Italy, he sells here in the U.S., I don't know, 20 to 30 million pizza crusts. And they're made with water from a particular region in Italy because it's so pure and clean and is probably one of the best producers in Italy. But one of the things that nobody here has talked about at all is that we drink 412 8-ounce units of this product per capita in the U.S. Per, I mean, that's per person. 412 8-ounce units. And with all due respect to the doctors and the audience, nobody is talking about Coca-Cola or sugar drinks or sweets or anything else. And that's something that, not just to pick on Coca-Cola, but orange juice and other things, I mean, everything has sugar in it, corn syrup and all the other issues that go on. And we, finally, we got that, I don't know if it's in all schools, but we got sodas out of schools. So it took years and years to do that. So while we're talking about saving, you know, young people with their teeth with adding fluoride, I just don't see, we're not taking care of the real issue, which is this particular type of product and the amount that we drink. We actually drink less bottled water than we drink Coca-Cola in the U.S., which is, it's a pretty scary deal. I'm going to be in support of the letter only because, and it's just something that I've worked on since we knew that it was going to come up. And I've, as councilmember Hunley, I've asked people just randomly. I've talked to doctors. I've talked to quite a few folks. My personal passion and feeling for it is that I don't really want to have it in my food. Mayor Cook talks about it being in the system. I don't really want it in my wine. I don't really want it in my meal at the Swiss or anywhere else. It's just my sense. I would love to do, I do a lot for the community. I work in, with the Rotary and so on. However, on the other side, I do believe in vaccinations. I mean, my kids are vaccinated. Rotary, we've been around vaccinating people for polio around the world and eradicated, you know, for the most part, just a terrible disease. So I believe the government can step in or organizations can step in where people are given a choice. But I just don't think this is something, and I think Sonoma needs to take a leadership role in our county, to not support this.
Thank you, Gary. Vice Mayor Gallion.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank the mayor for bringing this forward because it was an opportunity to actually feel how our other council members who are newer to this council feel about this particular issue. I myself, you know, have gone to numerous meetings over the past, I would say it's been almost three and a half years, on this particular issue. Trying to educate yourself on this issue is not something that can be done on a Thursday when you're making a decision, on a Wednesday night, okay? Less than a week's worth of time. I've seen fact-checking, going out in public meetings, hearing both sides of the story being told. I think it's important to sit there and actually listen to both sides of the story being represented. I liked the way the council came forward in 2013 and had representatives from both sides of the argument before everyone, receiving the same information, being at the same level in order to be able to make a decision. Our Board of Supervisors is doing this to the extent that along their path, even though they have not reviewed their study in 2013, they went ahead and recommended additional funding to go out and get yet another group and this independent advisory group to come back and actually study this, based on the, let's see, it's the NWH Americas, a Colorado-based firm, to get feedback from the county's new public health officer and other officials in their analysis. They've gone through, they did this additional step in December. Our leaders of this county are not going fast-forward on this issue. They are taking time, they're calculating all the odds, and they're making sure that people are informed on both sides of the issues. Regardless of how I weigh myself on this issue in December, January, February, or March, I don't believe that all the information is present for me to make a decision. There are many phases to this. Choosing whether you want fluoride in your water or not is the biggest issue that garners the public emphasis, the people that will rile everyone to come out and actually voice their particular opinions. However, as I sit on this body right here, I have three new members to this council. We have never had that formal presentation before us to make sure that we are all on the level playing. I have to state that I would like to hear the results of the 2013 official study. I would like to hear the results of the additional study that's coming back. This is March or April, that's a designated timeline. I feel that my job here is to represent a community. I want to be making a safety issue. I want to be making a community issue and I want to go ahead and represent the people that are here. Whether my decision is no or yes, let it be a decision that is informed and complete yes or no. I concur with Madeline and why she wants to wait, because that decision is not present and available. So I could go on. I will tell you that tonight I learned no less than 40 different facts on this particular issue. So go ahead, put it together. I need time to actually evaluate that. And I want to hear that. I want to see the argument in its present form with the supervisors there. I am here to represent you on the Water Advisory Committee. I am going to do what you wish to do, but I want you to be making the best decision, the safest decision, the best community-represented position. And I am requesting that this item not go forward in the form of a motion tonight.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Gallion. And I do have a question for city staff, Dan. And thank you for being here. I was speaking earlier about the introduction of Russian water into our wells. When do you think the city of Sonoma would be doing something like that?
We are targeting to try and get what we call groundwater banking or aquifer storage and recovery in one of our wells by this coming winter. And it's just a pilot project. We've already done geochemical testing of the well, which has turned out well, meaning that we can put Russian River water into our aquifer and not have it come up with strange constituents.
How much money has the city of Sonoma spent on that so far? Do you know?
About $9,000 for the geochemical testing.
Do you believe that if there was, and I don't want to put you on the spot, I would never do that to city staff because I was gracious that you spoke to me today about some of my concerns about this. But I am very, I mean, I am very concerned about this. In the studies, is the city of Sonoma going to look into what happens if there is fluoride in the water? Because when we're talking water from the Russian River, we're talking about water that's coming through our contractor, which would have fluoride in it. So it's not like we're taking, we're using, when you turn on your tap, the water that comes out is what would be going into the ground. So if there's fluoride in it, it would be going into our ground. Has the city of Sonoma looked at what would happen if fluoride was introduced?
I would say I haven't looked to a great deal of depth and I can do that. But groundwater banking, while it is uncommon here in Northern California, it is a lot more common in Southern California where they do have fluoridation. And fluoridation, to some degree, is a naturally occurring element in some water systems. So it wouldn't be entirely strange for fluoride to be in the aquifer.
So is ours, Nick. But did you have a question? Comment? Okay. Councilmember Hunley?
So I have some more questions about this particular letter, which is sort of where my uncertainties lie. Has anybody, I don't think the staff has looked into it all, but as far as the text of this letter, has it been like fact-checked or anything? I mean, if the city is going to put something on it, I would want to make sure that it was something, you know, very clear. I do notice that it does call us the town of Sonoma, so at the very least, I would want that to be changed. But I also think that if it is something that we are going to do to send a letter, I think it would be more meaningful if it came from things that, you know, you mentioned tonight about, you know, our wine and our industries and stuff. And I think it sounds like there's interest that we could express to make this letter a little bit more Sonoma, rather than sort of taking a letter that someone else gave us. So as far as the process would go in having the staff put together a letter, how would that work?
Well, you could actually make that in a form of a motion and we'll see if you have council support to give direction back to city staff to more personalize the letter, which I would actually support that. Because I want to show that the city of Sonoma is concerned about fluoridation with, pretty much with the drought conditions going on. So if you want to put that into a form of a motion, you can.
Would I need to list these areas of concern or is that something that can be left open ended?
Well, city staff, I think you've gotten enough information from us up here. So if you just say that, I'll just say I'd make a motion to have city staff redraft the letter to make it more of the subjects that we spoke about tonight.
Okay. Well, I would like to make a motion to direct the city staff to draft a letter that reflects the discussions that we had tonight regarding opposing the fluoridating of our water.
And that would come back to the council for a final vote? Because I want to make sure that-
For final approval by the council.
Yeah. I think that would be good to have final approval.
I'll second that.
Okay. Is there any other discussion before the city clerk does a roll call? Okay. And before we call for a roll call, I want to thank Dan for taking time out and answering the questions. I appreciate you being here because, like I said, I don't really have a dog in the fight as far as fluoride. I know all the facts because I was on the council before and I've done a lot of research on it. But my main concern is the fact, and I'm making sure city staff's writing this down, is that the city of Sonoma is considering putting water in our wells and I would not support fluoridated water going into our aquifers. Councilman, or Vice Mayor Gallion?
Actually, there's minutes of this particular meeting. And in the form of just a question or possibly a friendly amendment, I think a letter being sent to the Board of Supervisors, just reflecting the comments from our particular meeting here. I don't know if anyone is willing to take that as an option. I just would like to say that if I am either going to support or not support this particular this particular item, it's going to be because I do not still feel that I have adequate information to be making a decision on one of the items that the Board of Supervisors will be discussing. Because we have operation costs, we have, we have no idea what, we know that it would be probably close to, I think it's $500,000 to go ahead and implement, which is initial. We have, or $600,000 per year, it's 4.5 million to implement this particular project, and then it could be over $600,000 in operation and maintenance. And where would those costs come from? Where would those dollars be forwarded? We don't have any position on that, because we don't have any information yet on that. So there might be other issues that need to be addressed, in response to the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you, Lori. Yeah, I'm actually, I would not support that, so I think that we might have-
Through the mirror?
Yes.
One thing we do know is that it won't be free, so, and if we send this letter, that we're making a statement that we don't want to incur these costs.
Well, and that's why the premature, I thought, it's the right time. So we have a motion on the floor, and we have a second. Is there any more comments? And so we'll have the city clerk, Gay Johann, call for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Edwards?
Aye.
Councilmember Gallion?
Nay.
Councilmember Hundley?
Aye.
Councilmember Agger Marti?
No.
Mayor Cook?
Aye. With that, what we just did is we gave direction to city staff to redraft the letter, to make it a little personal to the city of Sonoma, and that will come back to council. And forgive me for saying this, but when do you think that will come back, or?
Over the last second.
Okay, thank you. So for those out there listening, it will be on the March 2 meeting, which is our, next meeting?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to make it clear, I'm never comfortable making decisions when I don't have all the information. That's not my reputation, and I don't want to ever change that, so.
Oh, no, that's fine, and that's, and you reflected that in your vote, so that's-
Well, I'm making it clear verbally, so it goes into the minutes.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you. With that, we will go to council members' reports and comments. Is there any council member that would like to have a report or a comment? Councilmember Agger Marti?
Well, I'm so excited, my office hours. I'm running late, I know there's a escape hatch, an escape hatch out of City Hall, so all my meetings are running late, so now I know the door to go out of when people are running late in their discussions. And I'm really learning a lot about different issues here in Sonoma. I just wanted to let everyone know, and I said, I let our mayor know, and our city manager that I spoke to, the Sonoma Methodist Church, regarding affordable housing, that's something they're very, very interested in. And one thing they did bring up, thank you, Jack Wagner, was transportation, that people really have an issue with that, especially when people have to get to work, that they feel the bus service here is really failing us here. You know, it's, it's interesting, I've learned an awful lot about Airbnb, I've had people from both sides, which I find very exciting, and know far more than I ever have thought I would know about Montini and the Overlook Trail. So I really appreciate people coming to my, my office hours on Tuesdays from 11 to noon, and they're actually going far more than that, so possibly it has something to do with me, I am not sure. Thank you.
Is there any other, Councilmember Hundley?
I haven't decided when my office hours are going to be, but if you look on the city website, you can see my email address and my phone number, and I would love for you to call me or email me and set up a time. I'm usually, have flexible schedule Mondays and Wednesdays, so if you have something you'd like to share, I would love to hear it.
Vice Mayor Gallion, do you have anything?
I have a transportation meeting that I attended on February 9. I went ahead and went back, as the council had instructed me, about raising the local sales tax cap to 2.5 percent, and did not vote for that. However, I was overturned, and that will be part of the legislative action for transportation as well. So, that's just a report back to you. I think probably the most riveting presentation we had was about the Highway 37 origin and destination data. This is a report which I've, I've asked to have forwarded to all of you, so that you have the information yourself. And Madeline, I think you have it in your bound binder, which I did go ahead and voice your objection to, to the executive director. But what's very interesting, and why we did this in conjunction with two other agencies, was to go ahead and find the traffic pattern, and what it would be the benefit to us concerning design review, climate adaptation, things of that nature that are going to affect the entrance to the southern part of the valley. It was definitely done as part of a GPS locator format, so in other words, everyone who had their cellphones on during this particular day and time, and times that were set up, were captured on a digital basis. And it was done by a company called Air Sage, and there were a lot of questions about this, because I think a lot of the directors, when reading this report, and certainly the comments from the public, were not aware actually how much that data can be captured. This is part of Verizon, Network, and Sprint were the two agencies that were used, because AT&amp;T does not have good coverage in the Nevada Marin area. So it was very surprising to see that a lot of the destination from both Nevada goes over to American Canyon, parts of the East Bay, Vallejo, and they would track from when a person left till their return visit. So I'll tell you, the devil's in the details, but basically, it was a very informative study, and shows to me the different traffic patterns, and also the fact that, you know, when it comes time to actually talk about who participates, or who spends the dollars in this particular project, we can go ahead and see the different percentages that people will have as a shared basis in community, rather than just the dollars being handled with one agency. We'll be appointing, or actually recognizing, different agencies for the Citizens Advisory Committee. This is no less than 20-some, 20 people that come together as part of the overview of our agenda items that we have coming forward to the transportation meeting. And some of these agencies have not been updated, I think my comment at the meeting was, they have not reached the millennium. So they're going to go ahead and actually incorporate, and possible agencies such as the Sonoma County Bicycle Coalition, the Sonoma County Conservation Action as an environmental group would be considered, there's other organizations that have been phased out that are no longer there, Manufacturing Group, but it will be coming before the directors to go ahead and see who they would like to see on this particular panel. And they vet, as the Citizens Advisory Committee, a lot of the issues that are brought forward as directors, and their input is considered by both technical staff and directors for the agency. And with that, I will conclude my report.
Thank you. And Councilmember Edwards, you, I did want to mention that we had one meeting dedication this morning, or for your son, happy birthday, and let him know that the mayor and the vice mayor and the other council members said happy birthday. And I would like to report, since our library commissioner's sitting in the audience, I need to do a report on my library. Went to a meeting the other day, the main thing I get out of all the library meetings is get a library card, and go to the library, and learn about our library. We have, we have a great library, and I think the, I think the JPA has done a great job in all the other libraries also, but Sonoma Library is something that if, if you haven't been there, you definitely should stop by and get a library card and, and check it out, because I know that Joanne, when she gave the, the talk about here to the council, all this stuff that we have at the library, people don't realize how much stuff we have at the library, so with that-
Are you going to adjourn?
No, I'm going to go, we're going to do a-
I just want to make one last comment.
Yes, yes.
I just wanted to thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Councilmember Edwards, for choosing new commissioners, for the planning commission, because not only, you know, do they have to be good citizens, they also have to know what they're, they're going to be, you know, studying. So I appreciate that you vetted these people, and I know it wasn't easy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then I did want to report on Sonoma Clean Power, I did go to a meeting, there's really nothing to report, but the next meeting I'll be reporting more about Sonoma Clean Power. And with that, number 10, city manager comments and announcements, including announcements for the successor agency staff.
No report.
After I said all that, it's no report, okay. Comments from the public.
Well, it's kind of warm in here, it's a nice departure from how it was in the days past, when I would sit up here and freeze. Anyway, I guess that's because there's been a lot of hot air floating around up until now. Good evening, I'm Joanne Sanders, I live at 375 East Napa Street, and the reason, I'm here for two things tonight. The first one, though, is to congratulate Carol Jovanato and the city of Sonoma for her recognition as the Good Governance Award by the Sonoma County Taxpayers Association. Not sure if that was mentioned earlier to, and was it mentioned? Okay. Well, this is a prestigious award by the Sonoma County Taxpayers Association, not an easy group to please, they've been around Sonoma County for well over 50 years, and they're sort of a watchdog on finances, on all measures and taxes, and the goings-on of individual cities in the county. And they recognized Carol, and will give her an award next week, on February 26, at their annual meeting, and it's called the Good Governance Award, and Carol's the recipient for it this year. And I just want to congratulate her, all of you, all of us, for the path that's led us to, to get to this recognition. And she's really been the steward of the city's finances for 15 years plus, and is well-deserving of this recognition, so I will be there for sure, with bells on, to, to give her the award, and to get everybody else cheering for her, because she's been sort of a quiet hero, and if you compare a city of Sonoma and our situation, no, we never had any Furlough Fridays, some cities are still carrying that baggage from the recession, and just still have a lot of things to be proud of, that we can take for granted that other cities don't have, and it's thanks to you, Carol, and your stewardship of our finances, so I want to congratulate you on that. The second reason I'm here is just to put in a plug for, for the boring topic of traffic, but the, the, the level of congestion that is occurring and has gone, is getting worse and worse with 37 and 121, is really becoming impactful to our economy, and to being able to get people out to jobs. So if you, if you don't travel from here to Napa in the evening, all the traffic that backs up on 37 is going up to Napa now, and it's congesting us to get out of Sonoma, it's a, it's a long-term economic catastrophe that's going to affect tourism, quality of life, property values, everything, if you cut us off. And that's exactly what's going on. Just think about Measure M money, I think it's Measure M that's paying for the widening of 101, it's paying for SMART, we're paying for that, we're not really getting much out of it, and we need to demand and be the squeaky wheel, and I ask that all of you, as our representatives, be the squeaky wheel, demand reports, send letters, make this top of mind to get solutions for Highway 37 and the congestion that we're all feeling, because when, when you have bumper-to-bumper traffic coming up 121 to get to the wine country in Sonoma Valley to taste wine, and you don't have bumper-to-bumper in 101, guess where they're going to go, wine tasting? They're going to point that car the other direction. So we need, we need tourist dollars, we need access in and out of our, in and out of our town, for a lot of reasons. So I hope you'll use your power and your voice to, to help us out and represent all of us. Thank you so much.
And thank you, Joanne, especially for mentioning the award. I actually mentioned it to mayors and council members, and I saw the look in everybody's eyes, they know, Carol, that you, you're a good city major, and we're, we're lucky to have you. Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting.